Church, Colorado for August 19th, 2024. Thank you all for being here. We have three business items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is the 38th Avenue Refresh Project Discussion. Item number two is the Business Licensing Improvements. And item number three is Sustainability Action Plan, Project Update, and Draft Plan. And we will start this meeting as we generally start most of our meetings with comments from the public. We're glad you all are here. I have a number of people signed up to speak. And if you would, when I call your name, please come to the podium. Give us your first name and your last name. If you'd spell your last name for the record and tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge and what agenda item you're speaking on. And our first speaker tonight is Joy Op, and I have Amanda Birch on deck. Well, you'll have three minutes and we'll have the clerk start the time once you finish your name.
Hello, my name is Joy Op, O-P-P. I live at 46 Hillside Drive and I'm the current Chair of Sustainable Wheat Ridge. In 2017, myself along with 11 other Wheat Ridge residents got a very special letter from the mayor at the time, Joyce J. It was an invitation to serve on a new committee she was appointing, tasked with creating a plan for bringing Wheat Ridge on par with neighboring communities by offering a vision for more sustainable practices in our city. It was a huge honor and I told my daughter, who was starting high school at the time, that I felt like the city was putting resources in a very important direction. Just this past weekend, I moved my daughter into her first apartment as she starts her graduate degree in environmental policy at CU. And that milestone made me realize just how far sustainable Wheat Ridge has come in seven years. Councilman Hoppy and Doosman will remember our first presentation of the action plan. And although the plan was not formally adopted into policy, council took our work seriously and have implemented almost 90% of our goals set forth. The RESC, as we were known by, started our work by sponsoring a new tree planted at the rec center. It was such a tiny project, but it felt like the doors were opening. Since then, the committee has received grants for installation of EV chargers, joined the National Sustainable Neighborhoods Program, hired a full-time sustainability coordinator, adopted a green business program, joined the CC4CA, installed bike racks, published a newsletter with over 450 recipients, participated in Excel's Partners in Energy Program, hosted annual paint recycling and e-waste collection events, partnered with Jefferson County on the Love My Air to get air quality monitors at the rec center and Panorama Park, and initiated a solid waste management outreach plan. And this is just to name of a few of the many goals we've accomplished. The Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee has continued to meet monthly and has now joined the list of official boards and commissions. And our coordinator, Mary Hester, acts as a liaison between the committee and various staff organizations to make tremendous progress on many of our initiatives. We're so grateful for the city's continued progress in reaching the goals set forth in our first action plan. And the ongoing supportive council has ensured that our committee has had a budget and a thirst for action. But now is a time for a bolder and more visionary plan to be officially adopted into city policy. Now is the time for an action plan that holds the city accountable for making lasting and sustainable changes for residents to prosper long into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joy, one more thing, Joy. Can you tell us, can you give us an update on the tree? I haven't seen it in a while.
I'm sad to say I think the tree died.
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to work on that in the new plan, I hope. Our next speaker is Amanda Birch and Betsy Kopak on deck.
Hello, my name is Amanda Birch, B-U-R-C-H. I live in the Bel Air neighborhood in District Two. I joined the Sustainability Committee earlier this year and I'm honored to serve my community in this capacity. I'm excited to be here today among my fellow committee members to present our new Sustainable Action Plan, which aims to improve our residents' satisfaction and quality of life. The action plan is designed to enhance the daily lives of our residents. For instance, some of the energy efficiency and green building initiatives aim to reduce municipal energy use, contributing to a cleaner environment. Community engagement is at the heart of our plan. By involving residents in projects like community gardens, we aim to beautify our city further and create opportunities for social interaction and community building. Enhancing our public spaces is also a priority. The development of cycling and pedestrian-friendly areas and some of the arts and culture initiatives proposed in the plan will make our city more attractive and enjoyable for residents and visitors alike. The plan calls for educational initiatives like water conservation campaigns and solid waste and recycling programs, aiming to raise awareness and empower residents to make environmentally conscious decisions. By educating our community, we create a culture of sustainability that benefits everyone. Our Sustainable Action Plan is a long-term commitment to our cities and its residents' well-being. Ongoing efforts in renewable energy and transportation improvements are designed to reduce our carbon footprint and ensure future generations enjoy a high quality of life here in Wheat Ridge. Investing in these areas today means a healthier, more resilient city tomorrow. I ask council to adopt this Sustainable Action Plan. This plan is not just about environmental stewardship. It's about investing in our community's happiness, health, and unity. We commit to a brighter, more sustainable future for all Wheat Ridge residents by supporting this plan. Together, we can make our city a model of sustainability and a place where every resident thrives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Betsy Kopak and Connor Denton on deck.
Good evening. My name's Betsy Kopak, C-O-P-P-O-C-K. I live at 25 Skyline Drive in District Three. I'm also a member of Sustainable Wheat Ridge and know that policy changes and initiatives at the local level can contribute to climate change mitigation. I've reviewed substantial pieces of the Inflation Reduction Act that Wheat Ridge can assist in acting on through the proposed Sustainable Action Plan. Climate change and Wheat Ridge's piece of approving and acting on the Sustainable Action Plan is the quintessential act of Think Globally, Act Globally. The impact of climate change is being felt today in many areas, but natural disasters alone cause loss of life, burdensome cleanup, and rebuilding in high economic cost. In Colorado, that could be more fires, tornadoes, hail, and heat waves. The IRA takes on ways to mitigate climate change and also creates opportunity for resilience to climate change, but has left it to state and local governments to encourage and help their communities navigate the plethora of programs. The Sustainable Action Plan is a key part of helping Wheat Ridge do its part. Let me focus on just heat waves. The White House estimates that cooling degree days is to increase by up to 60% by century's end. Heat waves are expected to become more frequent, severe, and longer. How will this impact Wheat Ridge? This means more days when the most vulnerable need help cooling their homes or finding places that are cool. This will become a growing concern that the city will need to address to keep their citizens safe. Wheat Ridge can get ahead of the game by encouraging and creating awareness of the many programs that can help their residents, including updating their electrical panels to handle heat pumps and solar panels, installing heat pumps, energy efficiency improvements, installing solar panels, aggressively updating building code for energy efficiency and electrification, along with stream lighting permitting for all of these efforts. And there's tree planting to mitigate heat island in effect. The city should also lead by example and take advantage of the programs available for the municipalities, including EV programs, electrification, and solar panel installation. Everything that Wheat Ridge facilitates today will pay back in the future with a healthy, more productive community in the future. The proposed Sustainable Action Plan addresses creating resilience for heat waves along with all the other issues that come with climate change. I encourage you to approve the plan as a great step towards Wheat Ridge being an active community in mitigating climate change. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Connor Denton and Amy D. Pierre on deck.
Hello, I'm Connor Denton, D-E-N-T-O-N. I'm not currently a resident of Wheat Ridge, but I am a former one and I went to a high school here. I just recently joined the Sustainable Wheat Ridge. I want to take my time here today to address the importance of sustainability to the future of our city. Wheat Ridge is undergoing a significant transformation from a large influx of development to becoming increasingly desirable to live in. With that, one of our most pressing issues is ensuring that these growth and developments meet our alignment with our sustainable commitments. By prioritizing sustainable practices now, we won't only preserve our environment, but enhance the well-being of our citizens. This can go from integrating green energy, prioritizing buildings with energy-efficient designs, limiting water usage, and investing in alternative transportation infrastructure, all of which both increase quality of life and decrease cost of living for our residents. The decisions we make today will influence Wheat Ridge's environmental health, economic stability, and social fabric in the immediate and distant futures. Sustainable development can help mitigate the impacts of urban sprawl, help protect our local wildlife, and help ensure that our residents have equal access to all of our amenities. Additionally, it positions Wheat Ridge as a forward-thinking city, incentivizing residents and businesses who value environmental stewardship and quality of life to move here. Incorporating sustainability in our development projects, businesses, and everyday life isn't only about meeting today's needs, but preparing for tomorrow's. It's about making a city where growth and environmental responsibility go hand in hand. We plan and we build, so let's envision a future where Wheat Ridge thrives as a green and homogenous community. Thank you for your time, commitment to making Wheat Ridge a model for sustainable living.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy D. Pierre, and I have Stu Stewart on deck.
Greetings, good evening, council members and fellow residents. My name is Amy D. Pierre. It's D-E capital P-I-E-R-R-E. And I just broke the remote, but I live in District Two's Barth's neighborhood. I have been actively involved with Sustainable Wheat Ridge since its start in 2017, and it has been rewarding to see our community's dedication to sustainability grow over time. Tonight, I want to highlight how regenerative agriculture and pollinator support are integral to our city's future and how they align with the goals in our updated Sustainability Action Plan. Wheat Ridge has a proud history as an agricultural community, and this heritage provides a solid foundation for integrating regenerative practices into our sustainability efforts. These practices focus on rebuilding soil health, fostering multi-species ecosystems and biodiversity, reducing chemical use, protecting water, and enhancing pollinator habitats. This approach is more than a trend. It is a commitment to creating a resilient environment now and for future generations. One of the Parks and Recreation Department's initiatives, the Regenerate Wheat Ridge Program embodies this commitment and marks Wheat Ridge as a leader in this area. This program fosters community cohesiveness through learning and aligns with our plan's sustainable land and water management goals. Supporting and expanding this type of programming demonstrates the city's dedication to preserving our past while embracing a thriving future. The updated Sustainability Action Plan underscores our dedication to these priorities. It shows that we are serious about integrating sustainability into every aspect of our community, from enhancing green spaces to supporting public health and improving air and water quality. I urge the city council to support these initiatives with enthusiasm. By embracing regenerative agriculture, investing in green infrastructure, and fostering pollinator-friendly practices, we reaffirm Wheat Ridge's commitment to its agricultural roots while setting a standard for sustainability. This is a chance to showcase Wheat Ridge as a forward-thinking community that both honors its past and embraces a regeneratively sustainable future for our human neighbors as well as our non-human counterparts. Thank you for your attention and commitment to making Sustainable Wheat Ridge a model of sustainability. I'm excited about what we can achieve together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stu Stewart. And on deck, we have, joining us online, Sachi Burlingame. You'll be on deck.
Good evening. I'm Stu, last name Stewart, S-T-E-W-A-R-T. I'm a resident here of District Two, have been for about 10 years. As of this year, I've been on the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee and am now serving as Vice Chair. I've been so pleased to see the vision towards sustainability that has been taking shape in Wheat Ridge already, a lot of which was highlighted by Joy earlier. And really, that's all thanks to the efforts of the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee, of city council, of city staff, of the residents of Wheat Ridge. You've also heard some voices tonight of current perspectives and future considerations that make sustainability so important to our community. An overarching theme to all of this, though, is the clear and proven climate emergency that we collectively face. A climate that is 2 degrees Celsius warmer than pre-industrial times will undoubtedly bring about major environmental changes, more extreme events such as fires, damage to ecosystems, overall water stress. In order to limit our climate trend to that 2-degree maximum, emissions must be reduced from their 2019 levels by around 20% by 2030 and to around 50% by 2040. We have a rapidly narrowing window of opportunity to take beneficial steps to mitigate climate change in our community. The time is now. More aggressive and immediate actions are required due to the urgency of our climate emergency. Our city needs to adopt a climate approach that is goal-oriented to enhance our community's efforts towards sustainability. This draft Sustainability Action Plan is a good step towards that. It's a way to make more immediate actions real. It is a comprehensive, multi-sector plan that will guide more sustainable and equitable approaches for our community. Adopting this action plan will set Wheat Ridge on a track to positively affect our community now and for future generations to come. Thank you for your consideration of this action plan. It has been compiled with input from many interested parties in our community. I urge you to formally adopt this plan, weaving it into the framework of our community and allowing it to serve as a platform for all future decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is joining us online is Sachi Burlingame. If you would please unmute yourself and introduce yourself. Oh, are you here, are you here in person? Oh, well, you know, please come to the podium then. And you probably know the drill by now.
Yeah. Hi, my name's Sachi Burlingame. I'm a resident here. I live five minutes away at 10-275 West 34th Avenue. I am a new resident, but I grew up coming to Wheat Ridge my entire life. My grandparents moved here and I was able to spend every summer and every winter here. And I'm just, I'm currently a student at DU. I'm getting my master's in environmental policy and management. And so I've talked with the Sustainability Committee and understood their action plan to address having Wheat Ridge become a more sustainable city. So I read through the plan and I just wanted to come and speak on their behalf as a resident that's not on the committee, just to really promote their engagement and just thank them for their engagement and thank the city Wheat Ridge for allowing them to come in and just promote these initiatives and bring sustainability as a bigger initiative in the city. So that was why I wanted to come here, so thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight and speaking. Our next speaker joining us online is Carolyn Husek, and Julie Stern is on deck. Carolyn, if you're online with us, would you please unmute and introduce yourself? You'll have three minutes to address the council.
Hi there, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Great, my name's Carolyn Hushek, the last name is H-U-S-H-E-K, and I live in District Two. My family and I moved to Wheat Ridge just a little over a year ago before welcoming our first little one. Tonight, I'm joining for the first time, so nice to see you all. And I'm speaking on the 38th Avenue Refresh Proposal. A little bit about us, we moved to Wheat Ridge from downtown Denver and are currently a single-car household. We don't have any plans to get another car. We also just invested in our first pair of e-bikes thanks to the Colorado Rebate Program. And these last few months, exploring not only our new neighborhood, but spots around, the businesses that are thriving, the bike paths, has just been so much fun. We frequently visit the businesses on 38th by, I think you can take a guess, bicycle. And while we're still a few years away, our little one will most likely go to Stevens Elementary because this school is closer to us, I suppose. I strongly urge the city to prioritize the preservation of bike lanes, not only for the safety, but also for the environmental benefits. I think removing those lanes would be a big, big step backwards. They're super vital in connecting the bikeways that we've recently learned to come and love and enjoy. And we're eagerly anticipating even more connectivity once the Wadsworth project is completed with those added extra lanes and walking paths. That's all I have to share, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for joining us. Our next speaker and the last speaker I have signed up to speak is Julie Stern. So Julie, if you're with us, if you'd please unmute and come on, come online and introduce yourself. You'll have three minutes to address the council. I don't see Julie on, there she is.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can, please continue.
Thank you. My name is Julie Stern. I live at 7630 West 48th Avenue. I frequently, like the previous speaker, use the bike lane on 38th to access businesses on 38th on a weekly basis. Unlike the previous speaker, I am a person who loves to bike around our community, but I'm not, not quite at the level of investing in e-bikes and making most of my trips by bike. I would describe myself as not the most super brave biker. I was hit by a car while riding my bike in 2013 and I suffered a traumatic brain injury. So I and many like me need protective bike infrastructure to feel comfortable using my bike to reach community destinations and, excuse me, and as the previous speaker pointed out, reduce car trips to help with our community's air quality. While I do ride in traffic when it's necessary, I have been honked at and nearly hit again while riding along 38th trying to ride in traffic when the bike lane has ended, which you can imagine for someone with the experience I've had is stressful, not to mention needing to merge with traffic when that all-too-short bike lane ends. I was disappointed to see that badly needed improvements in the pedestrian experience along 38th are proposed to come at the expense of cyclist access to the new and improved corridor. The less comfortable our community is for biking, the more parking we will require as possible bike trips like mine are replaced by car trips. We need more bike access connecting our neighborhood to key destinations, not less. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all of the folks I have signed up to speak. Thank you all very much for coming and addressing the council. We appreciate it. We will now go to our first agenda item. This is the 38th Avenue Refresh Project Discussion. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maria Andrea is here tonight, our Public Works Director. We've put together some potential next steps to move forward on the 38th Avenue Downtown Main Street revitalization that we've been working on for numerous years. And as you all know, we have the 2J funding that voters approved this last November. We're going to be issuing some bonds this fall. So Maria has put together some options. She would like to get some further direction from city council on, so Maria.
Great, thank you so much. Yes, so happy to be here tonight in front of you to talk about this exciting project. I think it was certainly, many of you were there on Saturday morning when we began Phase Two of the Green at 38th Project and really almost a phase in of itself before we build into this greater project that we're going to talk about tonight. So kind of the start of things along that corridor and hopefully for many future things to come, great things. So the last time that this was really discussed by council was back in 2016, so more than eight years ago now. And what we've seen since then is obviously a lot of changes, both within the world and within our community. That includes a growing interest in enhanced biking and walking opportunities as well as safer streets for all users and a renewed focus on revitalizing our business corridors. This has been noted in various public outreach efforts through the Let's Talk Resident Engagement Processes as well as implementation, as I mentioned, of the Green at 38th Project. And obviously, our current reconstruction that's going on along Wadsworth Boulevard to not only enhance traffic flow, but also provide better amenities for, again, bicyclists and pedestrians. So really, this makes it an ideal time to revisit and reevaluate improvements along this stretch of 38th Avenue. So as I mentioned, the focus tonight is not the entire corridor, but really the, kind of the remaining piece. So from Wadsworth to Harland Street. East of there, there were improvements made, probably around the turn, about 2000, early 2000s. So we're really focused on this segment that has been deemed more of a downtown area. And tonight, what we'd like to talk about, just to give you a preview of some of the discussion points, is really, is this the right time, in city council's opinion, to undertake this project? Our next steps would involve hiring a design consultant to go through and basically build upon the work that was done in 2016 and get that to a point of preliminary design with public process to see where we can essentially move forward to ultimately construction, hopefully within the next several years. Then secondly, are there any other goals or outcomes that we should be considering at this time? And then, as several of our public speakers have spoken to just previous to this, should we retain on-street parking in lieu of on-street bike lanes? Which of those are the more favorable at this point? Or how do we integrate both of those? And then there are, are there any elements that should be considered at this point in the project? Just a little bit on background, there's a ton of background. There's a ton of history on this project, as I'm sure a lot of you are aware of. And many have probably lived it and experienced it. So really, the evolution of 38th Avenue as a main street has been a priority, really since the first or original neighborhood revitalization strategy was created in 2005, way back then. Since that time, a lot of planning and implementation has been done, including the 2011 corridor plan that was created for 38th Avenue. Ultimately, then in 2012, they restriped the street to go down to its current configuration with a center turn lane and one through lane in each direction, followed by an unsuccessful ballot initiative where we were actually talking and put it on the ballot for the public to decide, should we... where we were actually talking and put it on the ballot for the public to decide, should we modify the street widths significantly? So again, since that, after that time, that was about 2014, and after that, a Create Your 38 Project was implemented to look at a very robust public process to come up with a design that provided for continuous sidewalks and amenity zones, but staying within essentially the existing curb lines of the street as it is currently configured. Again, the, and then ultimately leading to the, our update that was completed in 2019 of the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, so about 15 years after that original one was created. And the takeaway or one of the recommendations from that was that this, we should move forward again or continue to look at the Streetscape Plan for 38th Avenue. And they noted specifically that it would only be possible with funding via a future bond. At that time, back in 2019, the two e-bonds had, I believe, just been approved. And so that was kind of the impetus, is that there was a good feeling from the community that this needed to be done, but that we needed still to have the funding in place before it could move forward. So again, here we are, eight years later, or, excuse me, five years later, after that process, talking about this, and hopefully that is the right time. The 2011 corridor plan identified four kind of key elements that were integral in creating that sense of place. So instead of just being a corridor that you drive through and something that you go to get to some other destination, creating that sense of place within 38th Avenue. And that centered around these four elements of identity, vitality, appeal, and mobility. So as we move forward with the design, we'll keep these tenants in mind to make sure that we're hitting on all of those. So the next several series of slides that I want to show is just some of the concurrent conditions out there. And I took all these pictures within the last few weeks, so they're really current. And it just shows, and I use the word refresh in the project title because I think that's really what's needed. It looks, there's certainly an element of tiredness. So refreshing it, livening it, really bringing some more energy out there and building on some of the elements, again, that are already going on. We're seeing a lot of patios, a lot of new coffee shops, new businesses out there. So how do we make the public and the private realm kind of work together to revitalize that space? So this first just shows the existing, these are Excel-owned streetlights. They're that kind of Victorian style. They have both single and dual globe style lights. But as you can see in the left, and then I'll show in a subsequent slide, we've had continuous vandalism, people trying to tap into the electrical power or in just other ways, getting into the base of those light poles, people hitting them. And you can see, especially on the left, and it's probably a little bit harder in the other two photos, but some of them are very faded. So they did start out as black and over time have kind of gotten to this kind of patinaed, almost greenish gray that you see there. But then some have been replaced and they're, they are black. So you have kind of a mix out there. These are some of the Excel Transformers that go along with the streetlights. And you can see, again, these are four different locations, not all of them, but four locations where there's been significant vandalism occurring just in that short stretch about a mile and a half of 38th Avenue. And we, staff continuously talks to, we have direct communication with Excel's decorative light manager. They have one person who's in charge of that, and they just know that this is an ongoing issue. So it's not for lack of trying by Excel, but more really that it's an ongoing maintenance issue that they just don't have enough resources to keep up with. This picture shows a little bit here, some of the differing conditions in terms of the pavement. So the first picture on the left there, you see a tree well and the different kind of textured surface. You can imagine if you're walking in that in the dark. Or the third picture, that if you're going and stepping off of the curb to get into your car, you could easily catch your foot on that. So it becomes a tripping hazard. Anytime where you have those differential grades, the second photo shows that depressed manhole there. So instead of either turning the manhole, raising it, getting it out of the curb line, they sloped the sidewalk down to match the grade of the manhole. And as you can imagine, if you're walking along there, all of a sudden you're feeling that dip instead of staying more level. And then the furthest picture on the right is just some new concrete that was installed with the new development. And as you can imagine, you're having to take a sharp left and a sharp right. We're probably going to go out and probably paint those curbs so that they are a little bit more visible during the dark. So lots of issues out there. These photos just show that lack of continual sidewalk. The picture on the far right, you kind of end, the concrete kind of ends in a parking lot. And then you, on the other photos, just kind of show this mishmash of pieces of concrete added onto the back of the sidewalks, other pieces, the asphalt comes out, and you don't have that sense of continual, comfortable, safe sidewalk that, again, meets ADA standards, but also allows for safe and comfortable walking. Then planters. So we've got a variety out there. I could have probably put three, three slides together of all the different types, but we have, again, just a variety that have cropped up, cropped up over time. I think some of these were installed maybe by the adjacent property owners. Parks is, is filling those with plants and they look great. But again, kind of continuing with that, that theme throughout where we would have really cohesive-looking amenities along the entire corridor would be our goal. And then here you see just some different pictures of different street furniture. So on the far right is our kind of standard bench and trash can, but other stuff has popped up too. And while some of that can certainly be interesting and add to that enlivenment of the street, there's also some, as you can see in that far left picture, not in the greatest condition. So it's a wood bench. You see that one piece is kind of elevated there. And then we have some other types of furniture that have just popped up on the street. And we want to make sure, again, that those might be okay, but we want to make sure that we have accessible corridors for everyone there. Then landscaping. So there's, there's not a whole lot of space beyond the, behind the sidewalk that is part of the public right-of-way. However, there's a lot of landscaping areas behind there that could potentially be worked into this design by working collectively with adjacent property owners to refresh in those areas, probably, you know, engage with them individually to upgrade the landscaping if they were interested in, in not only maintaining them, but also then possibly also bringing a sprinkler line in to feed them. Many of these areas, you know, tend to die because they aren't watered. So, and they tend to be kind of on that border between the public and the, and the private space. And so property owners, I think, just tend to forget about them, don't see them as necessarily a part of their lot. So how can we work collectively to make those and integrate those? And essentially, almost, we wouldn't necessarily acquire right-of-way, but make them feel like a part of the right-of-way and a part of the wider street. We do have several patios out there and the potential for several more. So these are the two top middle pictures, you know, the, the pop-up cafes that we called them. They're temporary in nature. They were installed by Public Works. And they can be dismantled and moved at any time. So we would look at making these maybe in more of a permanent configuration of some sort. And there's also other opportunities. Again, we've had several businesses move into the area that might be interested in that type of facility out in the street, as well as some areas, as you can see over here on the right, where this is the parking lane, the official parking area. But then kind of this no man's land between the parking and the, the older existing curb line. So could that be another patio? Could that be rain gardens to provide some water quality? That was what we would be looking at. And then finally, just focused on, which was an effort back in 2016 as well, is these pictures just attempt to show a lot of those wide open driveways that span pretty much the entire width of many of the lots out there. So people can pull in and basically go right into a parking lot. While some of the buildings are set very close to the street where that is, might be the only option, there's also areas where we could possibly consolidate that to a, to a narrower driveway and/or raise the driveway so that it, again, provides that continuous level surface for pedestrians, but still being accessible for a car if it needed to drive over that. But consolidating that, making those smaller and really trying to eliminate some of those seeds of asphalt and concrete out there. Then a few kind of different ideas. So as I mentioned, the area, this is the Green Project between Upham and High Court. There is a signal here at, at High Court currently. You can see the marked crosswalks. One of the ideas that we had is to extend potentially the space, the public space here in the Green by doing some special pavement treatments. And potentially, you could do pop-up bollards, close off the street, so create additional public space, farmer's market, other kinds of gathering, just to extend that space if there was a desire there. But again, kind of add, this is just some examples from around the country. You know, adding something fun and vibrant here to facilitate having something more in the street than just the black asphalt. So one of the other pieces that we would propose doing is to start with a very robust traffic analysis. I know back when the restriping was completed, back in 2012, there is a lot of hesitancy and probably uncertainty from the community about whether this was really going to work or not. You know, we were going down from essentially two lanes in each direction to one in each direction. Would it handle the volumes? Would it, we see increased crashes? You know, is it really going to work? So I think, subjectively, we can say as staff that it does work. But I think we want to make sure and get a traffic engineer on board to help us, you know, just really see in relation to what are the set criteria for a three-lane street like we have out there now? Does it meet that for our current configuration as well as for future traffic volumes? And then also really in-depth look at, have there been a series of crashes? Are they localized or are they kind of spread along the corridor? And then are there solutions for that if we need to correct that? Also looking at potentially, we do have a number of signals along the entire corridor of 38th Avenue. And ideally, what you'd like to have is that there's progression, meaning that you don't, you go to one light and once it turns green, all of a sudden you get to the next one, it turns red. You want that to be green if you're traveling at or below the speed limit. And you can do that through what's called adaptive traffic signal or basically tying the signals together so that they work in progression. And you set the signal timing to do that. That is, we don't have that right now in those signals. They all operate independently. So you can come up, or you can, if you're driving along the corridor either direction, potentially hit a red light at every single intersection as you go along. Then finally, identifying opportunities and locations for pedestrian improvements. And then updating our parking analysis, which again was completed back in the early to mid 2010s. One element that we would also like to look at as part of the traffic analysis, this shows the corridor from the far left is Wadsworth over here. This is Harland Street, which, this is the limit of the section that we're talking about. And the green circles represent potentially a roundabout location. So we're not at, we can't sit here today and say that that's for sure can work, but we would like to analyze that as part of the traffic study to see if that makes sense. So this is an existing signal at Pierce. This is the existing signal at Harland. And then this would be the existing signal at High Court. So replacing, removing those signals and replacing them with roundabouts. So again, not that that's for sure, but we would like to evaluate that and see if that, again, helps to cut down on speeding and provide other opportunities, especially for crossings along that. And then bicycle accommodations. Several of the public speakers talked to this as well. So the purple shows, or so the, the purple east-west line shows the existing bike lanes that start here at Wadsworth. They're marked on-street to the intersection with Pierce at this location. So those would remain under this, under this proposal. We would not take those away because we can accommodate those without moving the curb lines at all. Then, right now, we have marked bike lanes north-south on Pierce as well as on Harland. And the proposal, the, the segment that gets difficult is between Pierce and Harland where there's not currently enough space to accommodate on-street bike lanes without removing the on-street parking. This was looked at back in 2016, and I think the plan at that time also showed the bike lanes in place from Wadsworth to Pierce, but then they dropped here and did not have bike lanes in this segment. So we're, we're proposing to continue that design. And what has, again, come up more recently is that we were able to, the city was able to secure a Dr. Cog tip grant a couple of years ago that would add multimodal improvements to 35th Avenue, that's the blue line here, all the way from Wadsworth to Sheridan. So this is a three-block difference. And what we're recommending is that this would be robustly developed with some sort of bike facilities, as well as pedestrian facilities, and that we would direct people, if they were traveling east-west, to use 35th Avenue and then Harland and/or Pierce if they needed to access 38th Avenue. So that three-block difference would be out of direction. And then this would still remain though, the section between Wads and Pierce. So again, I'll wrap up. Happy to answer any questions and turn the discussion back over to you as City Council to provide some direction for staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director DeAndrea. Okay, we will go to questions and start with Counselor Hoppy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things that I just wanted to point out before my question. The, the patios that, that are there, the Urban Renewal Authority owns those. So those are things that could be moved around to businesses that would potentially move in or need one. And, and then also on the long, so then here's one of my two questions. On the long curb cuts, my building was one of those that you showed. And for a very long time, the private sector, the, the nice improvements that we've seen on 38th Avenue is because of what the private sector is built. But for those of us that are still there and aren't doing any major reconstruction, like a new Chase Bank or things like that, it's difficult for us to, to consider putting any time and effort into that when we didn't feel like there was support from the city to do that. So we'll say there are a lot of owners on that street that are ready and willing and able to work with plans. What we need, though, would be something like help negotiating a right-of-way. Because with, specifically with my property, to put a sidewalk in front of it, we would need a second access point that doesn't belong on our property. So we would have to negotiate with that, with plansies. So what we would need is help doing that with negotiations and contracts and stuff like that. And so I'm just wondering if that's part of the plan to address some of the long curb cuts along 38th Avenue?
Absolutely. Again, you know, I think that's a role that the city and could take. It's helping to facilitate those conversations with adjacent neighbors. So is there the potential for shared access? Is there the potential, you know, to, to your point, how do we, you know, even go about building something like that? So that could be designed and even constructed by the city, again, probably at no cost to the property owner, if there was a willingness then to maintain it going forward. So I think that would be kind of the, the plan, if you will. And I think we could definitely provide that assistance and help to start to narrow down where possible, again, where we had willing partners to minimize those number of street cuts and that kind of wide-open look.
Great. And then with the Excel's boxes, with their very ugly boxes, it's my understanding that you have to have permission to like paint them or put any sort of public art on them. And I've seen it in other communities, but is that something that we have addressed with Excel about doing in our community?
Not, not that I'm aware of with Excel. We could certainly pursue that with them, though. Those small ones are probably...
Those small ones are probably, you know, maybe about a foot and a half, two feet tall, so they're not real big. But there's those larger controller boxes. I think I had a picture of one of them.
Yeah.
It's kind of hidden by, yeah, the second one or, yeah. There was, I'm sorry, I don't have the picture, but there's another larger box that's almost more chest-high that we could certainly probably explore that with them.
Great. And then I also just wanted to mention those concrete planters that are all along the street and along the street. Those are a repurposed planter that we, when we first did the road diet, that got put out there. So it would be nice if we could get something not from the 60s. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Maria. As far as the, yeah, the, those boxes up there, what I've seen is the example is the one on Young Field where there's a, it's called a wrap, that they put a artistic wraparound transformers or control boxes and love to see more of those in the city wherever we can. And they're, I think they're somewhat vandal graffiti resistant, too. And then as far as the, the bike lane, I, as a cyclist, even as a motorist, as I'm usually traveling somewhere, you know, be it on 38th, as you're traveling, you just passively are taking in what's surrounding you. There might be a business and you see it and you're like, oh, I make a, you know, mental note, I need to stop by that place. And I think it's really important to, we really need to have the bike lanes along 38th so as people are biking, they see the types of businesses that are around there. And I also, I also really value the city, we were just diversification of the modes of travel and traffic and that I want to, I want us to be looking out, you know, 10, 20 years of, you know, as our neighboring cities have gotten increasingly bigger and the traffic is more and more of an issue, I'd like to see definitely, you know, areas for parking for, you know, electric bikes, other bikes. And the ratio of, you know, the bike parking spot to one car spot has been, has been proven to be pretty effective. So I'm not saying get rid of all the car parking spaces, but, but I think we really have to start looking forward, what do we really need, you know, for that, having a safe, well-traveled bike lanes. And so I really, and I hear that from my constituents, you know, we, we all like to bike and, and we want to try to keep as much biking as we can at 38th to kind of help support those businesses. And so I, I don't know if we need, you know, further studies and cross-sections of like, where I understand there's a give and take. We have so much right of way and we can have this or not this and, and, but I really want to advocate for keeping and expanding the, those types of bike lanes. It just, it also gives the community more of an identity to have that close connectedness and, you know, some of the e-bikes are definitely, they are heavier and they really would be preferred to be on the street. And I know that if we don't have the bike lanes on 38th, people are still going to want to bike, they're just going to be on the sidewalks and, and I foresee potential conflicts with people, be it, you know, people with families or somebody with groceries or just walking that, you know, and I, I can't blame them. I know the traffic can, you know, can get busy on 38th and, and that's, those are your options, you know, do I go in the street or do I go on the sidewalk? And so, so I want to make sure that we're really considerate of that, but really appreciate your report and there's, there is a lot of improvement along 38th and I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Maria, for that presentation. I mean, I feel like anytime we're here talking about 38th Avenue, there's such a long history with it, like I could not have like knots in my stomach because of the history of it. But it's really exciting that we're at a place now where we're much more unified in the vision and what we're trying to accomplish there and we got some funding to see that happen. So a couple of thoughts. First of all, my read of the packet and I heard from a couple constituents was there was an interpretation that the packet was proposing removing the existing bike lanes. So thank you for clarifying that that is not on the table because I think that would be the kind of regressive move that we would hate to be having, have that conversation. So, but coming to the table with thinking that that's where we were, one thing, if you want to go to the map that's showing the, you were just there with the blue, yeah. So I think one of the things that's really important to note as somebody who uses that, the purple and the blue quite a bit to get where I need to go, that's actually showing a connection on 38 to Wadsworth, which really doesn't exist. And I think the thing, especially living west of Wadsworth, like I really think of the city as a, as somebody who rides, 90% of my miles in the city are on my bike. And west of Pierce Street, we just, we've got a grid problem. There's just lack of connectivity. And this plan contemplates accessibility from the south and not as much from the north. And so that connection on 38th Avenue is just so critical with like the major improvements that were, you know, are coming online in the next year along Wadsworth and that we're really excited to initiate a robust planning through the Dr. Cog grant on 35th, which I did point out earlier to Maria and to Lauren, that we were talking about 35th back when Bud was a City Council member about funding that. So, so I'm excited to see that is still on the table and I want to make sure that that is connecting well to Wadsworth because at the end of the day, if those connections don't exist, it doesn't matter how good the infrastructure is for a certain number of blocks if it doesn't connect with the other ways to get there. And I know we know that. At the end of the day, though, 38th Avenue to me is a pedestrian project and the improvements that we can make, and I'm really glad to see that you're looking at the granular aspects of the pedestrian condition and experience and environment around making it safe for everybody, you know, whether they're visually impaired or if you're just like me and kind of clumsy, really recognizing we want to make sure that people, you know, that 38th Avenue is a sticky place. When she gets there, you feel like you can walk and grab a bite to eat, go shopping, go hang out on the green, and we're heavily invested in that vision. So I really support moving forward with this with a real focus on that pedestrian safety. I don't want to lose any of the existing bike accessibility and infrastructure and to Councilmember Ohm's point, it would be really great if we were leaders in providing like enhanced bike parking and charging to really say like, come from a great distance. Like my e-bike, I can ride 20 miles somewhere as long as I can charge it when I get there. So we really want people to come to Wheat Ridge and stay there. And lastly, if we, if we only had like a million dollars just replacing the lamps would bring us at least into this century. So I think it's really important, though, that we, we had a design kit at one of the iterations of this design process that I thought had a really thoughtful, I think, like contemplation of our mid-century history but was very contemporary. So I think, you know, whatever this is, we want it to look cohesive and we, you know, want it to, you know, bring our community into today and, you know, be vibrant for tomorrow. But ensuring that's safety for pedestrians is first and foremost. And at the end of the day, making choices between accommodating bike mobility and additional parking, I'd be really curious, like just looking at your pictures, like the parking utilization in your pictures alone was not particularly noticeable or robust. And so if the vision that we have for 38th Avenue is that it's a really vibrant community corridor and we want those cars to be able to see the businesses, like doing the signal timing, like I appreciate it for speed. If you're going too fast, you're not going to keep hitting those green lights. But if, as you're driving through our corridor and there's a bunch of cars parked and you can't see the businesses or you can't see the vibrancy that we're investing in the pedestrian environment, like we, we have to make, there's no way to meet all of our needs on that. And when we prioritize, like the vision that we got through two very robust rounds of community engagement was a people place that's vibrant and visible and comfortable for everybody. So I realize I am a bike person, I'm a bike advocate, but I think the vision of the corridor is really centered around people. So if we have to come down to decisions like that, I think it's a people-first place and I would strongly support we keep that priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon me. Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director DeAndrea, for all this. This is great, great information. Thank you for compiling this. I just have a few thoughts also on the cycling accessibility and to, I echo my co-counselors Ohm and Holtein and their thoughts about that, but also just thinking about how we're moving ahead as a city with the investments that we're making and just thinking about this very small area on 38th Avenue. We're investing time and, and money into the Green Project and making it a place where folks can come and gather and see a movie or see music or go to an event. A lot of folks are going to attend those with, on a bike or with a bike, with their kids riding a bike. They're also going to walk. And I, I know that only because that in the Green's other iteration, we saw a lot of cycling and biking and walking to, or biking and walking to those events there that were held on the Green. So I have a lot of thoughts, but I think I could sum it up best by saying I'm all for riding on 35th. I live on 35th. It's very easy to ride east and west, mostly east, on 35th. But I don't think we need to, you know, slight or get rid of any of the biking opportunities on 38th Avenue. And given also the, the nod to pedestrian access and pedestrian safety, that should be paramount. We already have folks who I see walking with loads of groceries, waiting for the bus with carts, and I always worry about their safety. And so timed lights, absolutely. Improvements to the planters and the transformer boxes, 100%. And then just considering folks who are not in a car is also always a consideration and I am definitely in favor of, of keeping the, the cycling opportunity on both 38th and 35th. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm actually not a person who gets on her bike very much, but I'm going to go farther than what anyone has said. I, I really support all of the things that everyone said, but I, I would like us to go back for a moment and just think about, because I've been thinking about this as coming to this meeting and how I use that corridor specifically. So I'm going to start with the end game. I think we should get rid of the parking on the street in that, in that 38th corridor. And I'm going to explain my reasoning to everybody. Because it started out, we had the road diet. I know we're not even supposed to say that word around here. You know, those planters were really to keep people from running into the, the pop-up parks, which is why we use those old planters. And it's been staged. It's been a staged progression over almost 20 years now. And we're now at this point where the usage of this space has changed so much that, that I just sort of want everybody to get in their head. We now have this amazing green that's going to be finished in the next year, right? And the way we use that is really for pedestrian and for transportation. And, and I agree with what's been said around that, that the parked cars really, how it's, I want us to think about our usage because it gets used at night by a larger amount of cars for entertainment purposes because of the entertainment corridor in there. And those cars really shouldn't be streets, shouldn't be parking on the street anyway for lots of different reasons because it's dark and you do have a lot of people there. And we are creating more parking because the school's not open after dark that could be possibly utilized. There are just some spaces that could be utilized for the entertainment influx that comes up, even far back as the parking in front of the Safeway and sort of behind that, that area because people are willing to, to walk a blockish to come to entertainment. And I know we have to think about the neighborhoods and things like that, but during the day, you really don't have the influx of parking in that area that really requires the street parking, where we're able to absorb the parking either on the parking that the buildings have or into the neighborhoods. So this is based on going to nighttime events that we've had for city stuff where we've all been at the Green in the middle of the winter or in the middle of the summer, but I'm specifically thinking in the middle of the winter where we do the fun holiday stuff. And I've personally been hit, or not been hit, but almost been hit several times trying to walk across the street. And so I, I feel like we, we sort of need to rank our use of the area, sorry, I know I'm in my brain here, but I'm, I just, I really, we can't have it all there. And so if we're going to say it's positive for, for pedestrians on both sides, the sides of the street, and in the times that we're going to have a lot of pedestrians there, it's also going to be the time that it's probably going to be dark oftentimes and we're going to be trying to move them across the street so it doesn't seem like parking on that street area would be a good idea. Now, I realize there, there's traffic still going back and forth and that traffic could be better managed if we, and if we had great bike lanes. It's terrifying if you are on a bike or even on a scooter to go through there. And, and I think we're discouraging, I don't think we should be discouraging people to move, because I'm not going to go to 38th. I'm going to go right, excuse me, to 35th. I'm going to go through 38th on my scooter and, and probably make a bunch of poor decisions and cars are backing out at me and I've had that experience. I think we're ready, is what I'm trying to say. I think we're ready to have, we have, we are creating better parking options for the influx. I think we have enough parking to get rid of those front parking slots, to make awesome bike lanes that really pull people in and encourage them to go through there and to have safe car traffic. And I really think we need to amp up the ability to safely cross as pedestrians during the day or during a night because it's still really dangerous there. Even with all of the lights we have, there is not protected pedestrian going across that street. So in lieu of that, so to me, and I'm not saying get rid of parking everywhere, but I'm saying if we got rid of that parking, to me, that's number four. We have the bike, we have pedestrians, we have the biking and the, and the, and the two-way traffic with cars, and then we have pedestrian crossings, and then it's parking for me. So, so thank you for letting me meander around that thought. I'm supportive of everything. I, I would go farther and take all the parking out of that corridor.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I agree with most of what's been said tonight. I, sorry, it's 38th, we can't all agree. I, I worry that, you know, I talk to those business owners and I talk to a lot of those people along that corridor and I feel like they're worried about losing parking. And I feel like when I was at the Green kickoff the other day, one of the public comments I heard was, well, every time you guys activate this green, our neighborhood fills up with cars and it's a really big pain in the butt for all of us. So I'm worried that if we take the cars off of 38th where, and I know, you know, personally, I don't ride my bike over there, but we live on the other end of town and I like to take my kids and all that stuff and it, it's just not something that we do right now. So driving there and being able to park is kind of a big thing. And one of the things that I hear about Tennyson and some of the other places is people stopped going there because parking is such an issue. And I would hate to hurt those businesses along 38th by taking away the access to the bigger group things. And I, I believe wholeheartedly in cycling and that's why we've invested in those corridors like 35th. And if we can invest to those connections and those, those nodes, I think that we can't, as, as Counselor Weaver said, we can't do everything for everybody, but that is an economic corridor. And I do believe pedestrian safety needs to be the first thing that we start thinking about on that corridor because the sidewalks are a nightmare. I used to live near Wilmore Davis and I would walk my, push my daughter when she was a baby on the streets there down 35th to go to B&amp;F to go see, you know, grandpa and great-grandpa. And it was one of the scariest things I've ever done, you know, as a, as a father. So we definitely need to improve the sidewalks. We need to get We need to get rid of some of those curb cuts. We need to smooth that out. But, and if we can keep the cycling and some bike paths on there. But what I do worry is if we start talking about getting rid of parking and all that stuff, we're really going to affect those businesses. And when we start trying to activate the green, nobody's going to come, because it's going to be such a pain in the butt to get there that people who live on the other side of town, or, you know, we do want this for our residents, but, you know, the great part about being a sales tax collector is that, you know, we could get people from Arvada, Lakewood, Denver to come and pay our bills for us, right? So the more we can draw those people in, and they're not all going to be able to cycle to get here, and we want them to bring their families and do that stuff. So I think that if we can keep the parking and keep, you know, I'm all for, you know, narrowing it. I think the roundabout idea makes sense. You know, talking to the principal at Stevens, she's excited about the traffic update, and I think maybe a roundabout at that intersection makes sense. We really need to look at Upham and how that school can interact with Upham and maybe getting rid of some of the on-street, and I just said, don't get rid of, but some of the on-street parking, so that there is some visibility for those people trying to get out of Stevens during the day. But we do have a lot more employers along that corridor, and a lot of those people that go there aren't going to cycle to work. They actually go and they got to drive and then they got to commute. So we can't lose all of the parking. Thank you.
This, to me, represents sort of the, maybe not the final chapter, but getting toward the end of the story. Obviously, as the story's been going on for a long time and different chapters, there's been an ebb and flow of support and opposition and all kinds of controversy around this one street in our city. And in looking back on what was presented to the council back in April, on April 15th, the 38th East Refresh had an estimated cost at that time of $14 million. Repairing pavement and gutters, maintaining sidewalk landscaping, pedestrian elements, replacing pedestrian lights with city ones, removing the clocks, replace public art, enhance striping crosswalks, and creating, as we saw earlier, an identity that sort of reflects vitality and whatnot, and a lot of the very positive elements we want people to see and think of when they come to visit Wheat Ridge. The, as an aside, that the image of the utility risers damaged in one way or another, do we not have a sort of a hotline to Excel and to Comcast and to CenturyLink, because they're all, they all share that same style, that when one of these boxes gets damaged, somebody fixes it? Because we've got these all over the city. And I know I've filed a couple of complaints, and nothing seems to happen, because we're not dealing with something that the city of Wheat Ridge can do, but having to rely on a utility. So I would urge that the city make an effort to hold the utilities feet in the fire and get these things fixed, because they look terrible. The other items we are looking at here tonight, oh, we're talking about hiring a design consultant. Of that $14 million that's been estimated that this chapter will cost, how much of that would go to a consultant?
We haven't developed a scope of work yet, so I don't have an idea at this time.
Mr. Larson, could you clarify the 14 million? Are you, where did that come from?
That was what was presented to council on April 15th this year.
Yeah.
Was that?
The overall 2J discussion that we had.
Yeah, not just for 38th, though. Was it?
It's described as 38th Refresh.
All right.
And then regarding parking, which seems to be the biggest bone of contention here, as somebody who doesn't ride a bicycle, bicycle lanes are fine where they're needed. But I would like to think that the businesses and the people that run the businesses along 38th ought to have a voice, basically. And if they, a majority or consensus of the business owners along 38th agree that taking parking off the street is something that they're in favor of, then I think that's the way to go. The only other consideration is that if we do remove parking spaces, that the city may be consider creating or blocking out or somehow developing off-street parking for the visitors that come to see these great businesses on 38th Avenue and provide somewhere for the cars to go if we're going to take the parking spaces away. The staff memo said that the staff believes that parking should remain in place and find some alternative for bike routes. I would tend to support that. But again, if parking's under be removed, I would think the city would want to think about creating some off-street parking to alleviate, to allow people a place to park.
Thank you. We've got a few, we've had one round of councillors I wanted to opt in, and Councilor Larson has sort of hit on something that I was going to mention, is that alternatives to on-street parking. It's not just either on-street parking or no parking. Are there other opportunities for the city to acquire parking assets adjacent to the corridor, up and down the corridor? Is it possible to, you know, think of another type of mobility, a little shuttle bus that runs up and down 38th Avenue that services a parking area or something like that? Those are sort of some of the ideas that I would say, it's not either all bike or no parking.
Sure.
There must, we need to sort of, and I would say, just encourage you to sort of look at those alternatives. And then we have a couple of second hitters coming around, starting with Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for all of council's comments. I just, to chime in on the parking piece, you know, I agree with Councilmember Stites. When you look at a map of 38th, first off, I think, yes, we should keep the bike facilities that we already have, what we already have on 38th, what we have on Pierce, what we have on Harlan. And if you actually look at what businesses and where they are on that piece of 38th that doesn't have, that doesn't have bike lanes, you know, there's a few blocks east of Pierce where there's no bike lanes, but once you get really about two, you know, you get about two blocks over, like Newland-ish, then it really turns very kind of residential. And then also very, the businesses aren't necessarily the, like, office businesses, right? And then as you look at the Harlan area, you have, you know, Bardo on one side, you've got, you know, Huckleberry down the road. Well, Huckleberry has their own good parking, but I will tell you, Bardo will be in really bad shape if they don't have any on-street parking over there. And so in that area, the businesses where people would probably be going to on their bicycles have good bicycle access to that kind of lot, those blocks that aren't, don't have a current bike lane, but those businesses don't have good access to parking. There's also some underutilized lots that maybe we could figure out some way to do, to make, to get them to share, if, you know, if there's a way to make that happen. But, you know, Wheat Ridge lanes, right next to the Wheat Ridge lanes, there's a, I think it's a dentist, and, you know, they obviously are not using their lot after 5:00 at night. So there's some places we can maybe look for sharing, and that's kind of how I feel about with that. I do support bike lanes. I also want to, you know, support those smaller businesses that have smaller parking lots that need, you know, need to have places for people to park to be able to go in and get their coffee.
Thank you. Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I appreciate so much what Councilor Hoppe just said. I, by being in favor of bike lanes, certainly don't want anyone to lose business because someone can't park a car to go and get coffee or what have you. I'm curious about, in some of the analysis that we might be doing, if there could be, it's hard to, it's hard to put it into words, but could there be some sort of a question for business owners around, you know, feedback from people who are biking to their businesses? How many, how many bikes you see in your parking lot as opposed to how many cars? I also don't want to get too into the weeds, because I know business owners have 10 million things to do on a daily basis. So I just think that might be some good data to have, because I do know there are businesses on 38th that I have been to, and the bikes outnumber the cars in the parking lot. But that's, you know, maybe just an occasion in time, one-time thing. But I do, I do think that I would love to know that at least, or help find that out. Yeah, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor Holstein.
Thank you. I actually do have a question. So what would you hope to learn from doing the comprehensive traffic study? I know that, I feel like what we've been confronted with, confront's a strong word, what we're contemplating tonight are a lot of complexities, and what I'm hearing the city's coming forward with is, is this of interest? If so, there are stages to move forward, including doing a comprehensive traffic study, evaluating the possibility of doing the traffic circles or roundabouts. So what would this, what would be the objective of the traffic study? Because when I first read it, I was a little bit nervous that, you know, what if the traffic study comes back and is like, we need four lanes of traffic? And then, and then where are we? Because I think we're then in a position of having to like, almost start from scratch again on 38th Avenue. So can you maybe share a little bit more about the approach to the traffic study? What kind of information and how that information would influence some of the things we're discussing tonight around, you know, prioritizing different types of access?
Certainly. Yeah, so what I've heard collectively generally is an emphasis in terms of goals on pedestrian safety, pedestrian access, as well as bike access, and continuing just safety generally in the corridor, but good access to businesses as well, and really hearing from the businesses, you know, not only what they're currently experiencing, but what their needs are. So just going back a little bit, our intent with the traffic analysis would really be just to confirm. Again, I think from a subjective viewpoint, staff would say it's working well, that we would not need to go to four lanes. I think we just want that kind of, yes, you know, assurance from a quantitative perspective, you know, taking some new traffic counts, again, identifying any crash patterns out there to confirm that what we feel subjectively is accurate. Then to kind of take the next steps, that would be kind of the basis. But then, so as we start to develop this design element, what this new, what the corridor looks like, assuming that that three-lane section works, what elements can we do to enhance and work towards those goals of pedestrian safety, bike access, customer access, and business, and consolidating these access points? So what elements of traffic, whether that's enhanced crossings across the street, this idea of the roundabouts, you know, how do those from a traffic perspective work in that overall design to feed ultimately into the actual design of the corridor?
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. So I guess a couple reflections on that. One is, I think, since there's a programmatic piece to this and has been mentioned, we have a lot of underutilized private parking on that corridor. And, you know, we can easily anchor our perspective and our understanding today of existing businesses who are constituency and who we're hearing from. But I think when we first started having this conversation, if we'd envisioned like Get Right's and, you know, Stylist and Crate and some of the things that have like, really come into the corridor and sort of reimagining it. So I think, where are we five, 10 years from now? And so I really hope we can keep that lens. And what we really have that I think we should be looking at aggressively is, what are carrots and sticks we can use programmatically to really bring in some of those parking hoarders that are really not like, good use of the land? We're sitting here talking about public right-of-way and making hard choices between parking and bicycle safety and pedestrian safety. Well, we have these parking lots that are like, right there, that like, sometimes maximize at 15% utilization. So I think as part of this, we should really be looking at what are policy tools that we have available to us that, I mean, we all like carrots, but like, at the end of the day, it shouldn't just be a conversation that requires us to do the right-of-way, because the other right-of-way we have is the neighborhood streets, right, which our constituents also don't want us to be flooding into. So I think in all fairness, bringing in policy perspectives around, you know, could, you know, are there ways of like, either incentivizing or creating, yeah, incentivizing those private property owners to be participants in solving our parking issues, I think is a good use of our funds to be taking a look at. And then I am a huge fan of roundabouts. The thought of a roundabout at High Court, when I think about the size of that to accommodate the traffic, and that would chew into the green and it would chew into like, rolling smoke. And so when we're evaluating that, I just want to make sure we're still anchoring in that placemaking, and if the amount of space that would be needed to accommodate the traffic as well as safe pedestrian and bike crossings through there ends up like, eating into other investments and making that a great corner, I think we just really want to make sure we're evaluating that. So I think those were, oh, and the last point, just curb cut consolidation actually will create more parking opportunities when you actually evaluate the parking access at many of the properties on 38th Avenue. Part of their own internalized compromise on parking is that they've got two or three curb cuts. And if they were to actually consolidate that, that would actually give them two to four additional parking spaces. So the curb cut consolidation alone will actually help augment private on-street parking or private parking for some of those businesses. So I think when we're coming up against parking, let's not just look at our own right-of-way, but really bring in our business owners' solutions. Thank you.
Councilor Rome.
Thank you, Mayor. One thought I did have as far as what can we do to incentivize, I know that we have a really good partnership with businesses and giving them grants to do upgrades, be it some type of beautification. And perhaps there could be a conversation at that point of having some type of, you know, shared access agreement as, you know, part of that condition for that beautification. So I think it'd be kind of a win for all parties.
Director, that's all of the councillors I have signed up to speak at the moment. So we're going to, we're going to move forward. You've got some questions that you asked, discussion topics. Have you, have you, is there anything there that you need us to discuss in order for you to have a full handle on what a big task this is?
Yeah. No, thank you so much for the feedback. I really appreciate it and the direction. So I think our next steps would be is to work more fully on a set of project goals and then start developing the scope of work internally before we go out and solicit some design assistance. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Director. We appreciate your great, great presentation. Okay, with that, we are going to move to agenda item number two. This is the Sustainability Action Plan, a project update and a draft plan.
We are on, I'm sorry. So yeah, you may, if you still have your original packet, things are out of order.
Is this a different, am I on the wrong one?
You are. It's the next.
Okay, just tell me. I'll go to a different.
Just go to your agenda on your front page. It's the second item on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, I guess if we're going to use that agenda, then we'll go to item number two is business license improvements. My apologies. That's what happens when they change the agenda on you.
Agenda was, we apologize. Agenda was correct. The items in the packet got in the wrong spot.
It's always something. No problem. Okay, so we are on business license improvements. Mr. Goff. I'll turn it over to Ally. Ally.
Thank you so much, Mr. Goff. We have a brief presentation. Joining us tonight, we have the city treasurer, Chris Miller. This is his initiative. We have Mark Colvin, our finance manager, who is up on Zoom. Mark is actually out of town, but zoomed in for this, so thank you for indulging us in that. He's put a lot of time and effort into this. And also Cole Haslip, who's been the one driving this, doing all the research and organizing us. So Cole, I'll turn it over to you to start, or Chris to start?
Yeah, absolutely. All right, yes. Thank you for the introduction, Ally. And tonight, we are all very excited to be talking about business licensing improvements with you. I'm going to start with a brief overview of the presentation. We're going to start with an introduction, then we'll have a background that explains with an introduction, then we'll have a background that explains how we got to this moment and why we're discussing business licensing improvements with you here tonight. Then we'll move forward and discuss each of those proposed improvements that was included in the memo in your packet before coming to a conclusion of the presentation. During this presentation, you're going to see there's going to be blue, green and black text. That is because Mr. Miller, Mr. Colvin and I are going to be doing the presentation together. So just know that that, uh, different colored text is intentional and it's for us to keep ourselves on track. Um, and then finally, the last thing I want to let you know before we get started is that there are going to be several council options sections in the presentation and staff's recommendations are embold throughout the presentation, just like they are in your memo. And with that, we can get started with our introduction.
All right. You're green. You're on.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to start at the bottom because I want to talk about, um, business licenses. Um, normally when we think of business licenses, what we do is we think of, well, that's what each business needs in order to, um, identify and pay its sales tax. And yes, sales tax is the primary source of revenue for the city. Um, but in addition to that, what's really important about business licenses is that new licensees are required to have a business license inspection. And what business license inspection does, it's kind of like an occupancy inspection. It ensures that businesses adhere to proper land use, um, regulations, and it also ensures that the business itself, the facility is safe for occupancy. And what that does is it protects health, safety and welfare of the community. Next up is Mark.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so including all manner of retail, manufacturing, restaurants, personal and professional services, businesses, massage businesses, sole proprietors working from home, hotels, tobacco retailers and marijuana businesses, city staff process over 4,000 resident business license renewals each year. Um, the monumental task of processing business license renewals while facilitated by several online platforms is largely manual and performed by a small and dedicated revenue team of just two people. Along with the city's revenue auditor and the code enforcement officer, two other employees in the finance team, this revenue team of four provides support to all businesses. They diligently pursue compliance through audits and code enforcement efforts, and they perform large volumes of manual tasks ranging from data entry to research and resolution. Uh, next slide. That doesn't come without some challenges to, um, not just my staff, but other staff as well. Since 2021, several very important special license programs have been added. Short-term rental, tobacco product retail, hotel and massage. While the total number of special licenses is small relative to business licenses, due to the special nature of these licenses, it is comparatively far more time consuming to process special license applications and renewals and to enforce the code for those special licenses. The business license renewal process is largely manual and time consuming to staff, even if the license holder chooses to renew on one of two online platforms. Automated renewals still require staff to perform data entry task and to ensure the business receives their license. Imagine processing over 4,000 business licenses each year and more than 50% of them forget, just like you and I forget to pay our own bills sometimes. Businesses ignore reminders and they, and some may go a full year before finally realizing they have not renewed their business license for that year. It is costly to the city to chase and manage late renewals and to enforce compliance. Four staff do all this on top of other essential duties such as processing tax returns and payments, enforcing code for special licenses, educating taxpayers and assisting businesses with all manner of concerns and questions. For example, resetting passwords and reminding them of when their next tax payment is due. Chris?
Currently, the city has nine, actually 10 different types of licenses if you count the short-term rental license. Um, each of these different licenses may have a different renewal date than your business license, and the submitted options can be really confusing, confusing to business owners. Um, as Mark mentioned, it's a manual process that can cause delays and ultimately leads to a lot of non-compliance amongst business owners. That's ultimately what we don't want and we want to improve that process. Um, overall, we're looking to do three things. Number one, improve the business licensing process while at the same time preserving our revenue. Um, it's budget season and Ally made me say that. And, and at the same time, we're looking to recover our costs for the, um, inspection fees that we do incur for those new business license I mentioned earlier. Next up is Mark.
Thank you, Chris. Um, at their February 2021 strategic planning retreat, council, the then council in 2021 identified a priority to streamline and improve the business licensing process. In response, the finance division in tandem with other city departments evaluated several licensing software products. For the finance division, the best option is GOV OS, formerly known as MuniRev. Having used GOV OS to facilitate the rollout of the short-term rental program in 2021, finance staff are familiar and comfortable with its functionality. Staff believe that with GOV OS and the automation of the business license renewal and application process, that there will be significant and immediate time and workflow efficiencies. As we phase out traditional licensing processes and transition to processes automated by GOV OS, we believe businesses will also come to value GOV OS like we do. Naturally, we will continue to provide customer service to all businesses. We realize the change will involve some degree of in-person interaction and other handholding. Chris?
Okay. Overall, the goals of these proposed changes are to protect the health, safety and welfare of the community, follow state laws and best practices, make licensing easier for both our businesses and revenue. Can't forget about our cost recovery. I'll mention that again. And, um, maintaining licensing revenue and also to boost satisfaction, um, amongst our businesses with the overall licensing process.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Miller, Mr. Colvin for starting us off with a fantastic background there. Uh, now that we've kind of introduced the reason why we're discussing business licensing improvements with you tonight, let's get into what those improvements are. And we want to start with the remote seller information form. So the current problem that the city is facing is that our code requires both physical nexus and economic nexus businesses to maintain a Wheat Ridge business license. However, in 2022, the state of Colorado passed a law that prohibits the city from requiring economic nexus businesses to apply for or pay for a business license. So to comply with the state law, our finance team took the initiative and they introduced a remote seller information form, and we require economic businesses to complete that form in lieu of a business license. So what we're recommending for you to do tonight is to give us direction to amend the municipal code, to remove this requirement that economic nexus businesses have to obtain and maintain a business license. That way, the code will align with our current existing business practice and the code will also then comply with state law. Next, we want to talk about bi-annual license renewal. And Mr. Colvin's going to start us off by talking about the challenges that his team are facing and why transitioning to bi-annual renewal might be a good idea.
Uh, that would be my preference. Do you want to answer these questions as we go? Or do you want to circle back and do them all at the end?
I think we would prefer to circle back and do them all at the end, if that's all right with council and the mayor.
We, we can do them one at a time if you prefer. If you have enough information to, to answer that question, okay, let's do that.
Okay. All right. So we're on, uh, we're on council options is number, uh, well, I guess number one of many number ones. Um, do we have consensus to, um, to move forward with implementing a two, is this the two-year removal?
No, the first question is amend the municipal code to remove the requirements that.
Economic nexus?
Yep.
Or maintain a business license? Do we have consensus? So we have consensus on number one. On number two, take no action on the municipal code. So we're not going to do that. Okay?
We will proceed.
Go ahead.
Thank you. All right. Next, uh, Mr. Colvin's going to start us off with bi-annual license renewal.
Yeah. Thank you, Cole, and thanks, Mayor Starker. Um, with over 4,000 resident business licenses to process, that we're, we have, we face a challenge. The annual license renewal has become a highly inefficient and burdensome use of staff time during the long business license renewal cycle. Revenue staff are challenged to provide quality service to customers with needs unrelated to business license renewals. Due to the all hands on deck response to the demands on staff during the long business license renewal cycle, other important revenue team tasks and functions are strained or postponed, such as code enforcement and late filer notifications. Staff believe that a bi-annual bu, business license renewal could reduce the current workload experienced by staff. And staff believe that businesses, as evidenced by a survey that will call, that Cole will speak to later, welcome a license renewal program that is not annual. Cole?
Yeah. So we started taking a look at the idea of bi-annual renewals by looking at what some of our peer communities were doing. So we took a look at 12 comparable cities in the front range, and we found that four required an annual renewal process, four required a bi-annual renewal process, and four had licenses that never expired. What we took away from that was that bi-annual renewals, uh, seem to be a somewhat common practice among other cities that have business licensing. And when we were able to speak with those cities, uh, what we found from them was that it made their lives for their staff and their businesses a lot easier. They weren't experiencing any difficulties and overall they felt it worked very well in their communities. After completing that peer cities research, we then went and conducted a survey among the physical nexus businesses in Wheat Ridge. So those are the businesses that have a physical location like a brick and mortar in the city. And when we asked them, we found that 66% of survey respondents preferred a $40 bi-annual renewal to a $20 annual renewal. The supporters of changing to bi-annual renewal said it was just more convenient for them to renew for multiple years at once. Some even saying, let me renew for as many years as possible. That way I don't have to do it all the time. When we got comments back from the opponents, they said that they just kind of preferred the routine of the annual renewal. Um, it was in their muscle memory, if you will, already, and they were just comfortable with that. And then the other concern that we heard was that businesses might end up paying for unused years if they didn't survive. After considering the peer cities research and the survey results and considering how bi-annual renewals might impact, uh, our businesses and the city's finance team, we wanted to go forward with the recommendation to move toward bi-annual renewal with the $35 fee. And we landed on a $35 fee rather than simply doubling the fee to $40 because we wanted to reflect the efficiency gains and the reduced workload associated with bi-annual renewals. Once we consider bi-annual renewals, that leads us to the natural question, which is how would we implement such renewals? The idea would be for 2025 business renewals. So for the folks who are renewing in this upcoming January, half of them would renew with a license that expires in 2026. Another half would renew with a license that expires in 2027. And the idea behind the staggered approach there is to set it up so there's about 2,000 renewals every year rather than just pushing that 4,000 renewals to every other year. And our hope is that that makes it a lot easier for the finance team to work with. The way that we would select whether or not a business ends up in 2026 or 2027 renewing is a two-step approach. First, we want to give businesses the option because we saw there was some split among whether or not they'd want one or two-year renewals. So the idea would be open it up, give people the option to choose one or two renewal for a time period. And then once that time period closes, look at the remaining businesses and split them so that we get that 50/50 split that we talked about. That's our plan for implementing it if we get council consensus moving forward. And the options that we prepared for you tonight are to implement two-year renewals for remote seller information forms and business licenses, increase the business license fee to $35, and amend the municipal code to support these changes, or take no action.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hoppy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Aaron. Thank you, Cole. So my question is, can we do more than two years? Because, um, if I could do a five-year renewal for my business, that'd still cost me less than run, than, um, than doing my business renewal annually with a late fee because that's how it ends up for me. And so over the five years, it would cost me significantly less money if we could do that. Now, I do understand that you guys are trying to estimate the money that comes in for the budget. And so I don't know if that would mean like if we did offer something more, something longer, that that would mean that those longer renewals would then have to be retained and carried over every budget season or, you know, so I do understand that that, that piece is kind of why you guys are trying to go to the two years to maintain that revenue stream, but I really would like to see if we could go longer.
Yeah. Consistent revenue is definitely one of the reasons, uh, why we were considering two-year rather than longer. But the other part that's really important is that this business license isn't just a revenue stream. It's actually a really important way of collecting information that we use to facilitate the sales tax process. So if we got anything longer than two years, we have concerns that our information would become outdated and that would cause other complications.
And, and would it be too difficult to, um, separate out the businesses that don't pay sales tax and allow them to renew for longer?
I'm not sure about that. Mr. Colvin, might you be able to take on that answer?
Oh, I'll try. Um, it's a similar response as what you just, um, gave Cole, that, um, even in some of our specialty licenses, um, circumstances change, um, as this council has seen with, um, enforcing short-term rentals. Um, that's a very fluid program. Uh, people getting licenses, uh, people on wait lists. And also with, uh, hotel licensing, we've seen the, the need to monitor those a little more frequently, I think than five years would, would be a, a stretch or, or even three years, um, or even two years. So, um, I, I believe that the specialty licenses would, um, need to be, um, managed and monitored probably a little closer even than the regular business license. Did that, is that close to what you're asking?
Yeah, that actually it, it, it answers my question and explains why we can't go further than the two years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Counselor Rome?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Cole. Um, so I have a business license that I fill out and every year, and for me, it takes the same amount of time as it does for one year as it would for two. So it's economy of time. And I just am not seeing the reason why, you know, so every time I do, every year I would be saving $2.50. Um, $5 is nothing. The 250 is nothing. Um, I would rather see that money aggregated and so over, uh, what is that? Like 20K or something? Um, uh, you know, $5 times 4,000 licenses. Um, I would rather see that money put to good use. Just keep it at, instead of trying to give me a discount, I'm used to paying the 20 per year. Use that for something. Maybe it's a, something, a catalyst for business. Maybe it's some type of special classes for, uh, new business members or something, but I would rather see that than, than give me a discount. You're doing me a favor if I only have to do it every two years instead of in the one year. I, I would love to have it, you know, like Councilmember Hoppy said, it'd be great to have it for five years and just do one fee. But I understand that you're trying to keep things kind of somewhat even. But I understand that you're trying to keep things kind of somewhat even every other year, but that's, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Councilor Holtein.
Thank you. The questions have kind of a little bit gotten to what I was going to bring up. The first I was actually going to bring up the specialty licenses. You know, we've been in here a couple of times in the last few years, you know, having to sort of redress some of our licensing concerns where we're using licensing to actually help with like public safety and things like, I mean, I guess all the licensing to some extent does that, but I, I, would it be possible for specialty licensing to keep that on a one-year renewal, just in part because we have, you know, between hotels and the short-term rentals, like we actually run into circumstances where that licensing is, you know, first of all, with the limited number of licenses with the short-term rentals, and there's a waiting list if the license isn't being utilized, it's keeping somebody else from getting a license. And with our hotels and motels, you know, we are, that's, I mean, that's a very active situation. So that's my first question, then I have a second question.
Yeah, just to, you know, clarify. So the proposal just applies to business licenses, not special licenses, and I understand that might be confusing. So we're not talking about moving to biannual for short-term rentals, tobacco, et cetera. Just purely the business licenses, the proposal we're putting forward. And you hit on some of the reasons why there. Those special licenses require a higher degree of attention from our staff related to code enforcement issues that are specific to their circumstances. So we're not currently proposing making a change to those licenses.
Okay, and then I also really support what Councilmember Ohm was mentioning that I would love to see, I mean, if, if you're looking at a revenue neutral model on the 40 versus 35, I mean, one of the reasons to not go beyond two years for me is that important data and information exchange and staying in touch. So if, you know, if the revenue works and there was, and you decided to stay at $40 for two years, is there some type of benefit or communication that could really, that the city could do to really help strengthen, you know, either businesses like participation and city things or, or whatever? I mean, you guys know better than I do what those needs would be, but to me, it's the communication tool as well as the data and understanding of our economic situation. So I would support two years, but I would also support if what you're bringing forward is 35, I would support staying at 40 and looking at how we could use that revenue. And I'm just thinking back to when we started with the COVID grants and how many businesses were like, what, we need to be licensed? And so, so there was a lot of heartbreak with that. And so, you know, could we use that for some additional outreach and like strengthening some collateral materials with our many, many, many business associations in the city? So anyway, those are just my two cents, but I, I support going to two years for our business licenses.
Real quick, just keep in mind that it's, it's not going to be an increase in our current revenues if we keep it at 40. So bringing on a new program, education, that would be an additional thing. So, but, but we could look at, we could look at other opportunities for education, which we are already.
Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron. I actually, I, so if we're not touching the specialty licenses, when you file sales tax, you file sales tax quarterly, right? So is that not an op, I guess it depends?
Yeah, we have monthly, monthly filers, quarterly filers, and actually annual filers.
Okay, but is that not an opportunity to have some contact with those businesses?
If they file. If they don't file, then, then we have to try to find them. And if we don't have their current information, it's hard to find them.
I guess, but at the same time, we have a bunch of businesses that are operating without a business license anyway, and we're making the same effort to find them as we would the sales tax people not paying sales tax, right?
It's just a lot of extra work to, to track down folks instead of doing all the other things that finance staff mentioned earlier.
Okay, okay. I just, I, I see the benefit as a business owner to, is there a lifetime B that I could pay that I never have to come back and deal with this ever again? Or a five-year, or a five-year business license?
We have too many business owners on this council.
Well, and, but our businesses pay the bills, and, you know, when we make things harder on businesses, we make things harder on everybody. You know, I was shut down, and I feel like the poster child for, you know, stupid business mistakes, but I was shut down, had to go to Lakewood for a few months back in 2016, 17. I still get emails from the Lakewood, and I hate talking good about Lakewood ever. But I still get emails from Lakewood Economic Development. I file a business license in Wheat Ridge every year. I get nothing, maybe once a, once a something, just an update. So, you know, I, I feel like we're not doing enough from like the backend to really educate those businesses even as, as an economic development department or as, as we have 27 business associations or whatever, and, you know, nobody is touching the actual businesses because they're all confused and have no idea what's going on, and we saw that during COVID, right? You know, they're trying to give grants out, and half these people don't have business licenses. And these are people who have owned a business in Wheat Ridge for 20 years and had no idea that they didn't have it. So we, you know, it, it doesn't matter, I guess, to me, if it's, you know, $40 for the two years, I'm, I'm fine with that. You know, I would, you know, even say I would pay more upfront if I didn't have to touch it for five years. So that's, you know, if that's a service that we could provide because, you know, the $20 is nothing, but the pain in the butt and the late fees and the, and you don't know, by the way, as a business owner anymore, what phone call is coming to you, what email is spam, what's, what's real, you know, you get 10 calls a day from Excel saying that they're going to shut off your power, you know, like there's a lot of confused business owners, and it makes it harder. So the more that we have to deal with stuff like this, it's harder on those businesses. So the more we can streamline this process, if, you know, it's just a, you know, or set it up on an automatic payment, something like that, just to, to make this easier for them. So that's all. Thank you.
Councilor Weaver.
Thank you.
Or Alec?
I was just going to say, I mean, we, we did some preliminary research into whether or not there could be choices and determined that it, it's really very difficult to do that. And I think that's what we're hearing from councilors Holtein, Hoppe, and Stites is, you know, maybe give people options because we know that some businesses aren't going to want to do that. You heard about some of the concerns. But let us do this. I think with this direction, I think we could do maybe a little bit more digging on our end and, and, and learn a little bit more about what might be possible. You know, with our new system, we want to make things real simple. The goal here is to simplify, not to make things harder, but I think we can take it back and, and have another look.
But it's also, we want to make sure it's not too onerous on staff too, because we want to provide
Exactly, yeah.
service to businesses when they have questions.
Yeah, I think what would be helpful tonight on this particular question, if in general you're saying we're, we're okay with the two years at, at, at the $40, if that's the direction you want to give us, great. But know that we'll, we'll go back and just do a little bit more research and make sure that we didn't miss something when we looked into this, because we did ask our new software company about this. And we also need to think about how it's written in the code. You know, as this is very much stipulated in the code. So we want it to be simple. We want it to sort of work for the majority, but I think if you give us some consensus to move forward, do that knowing that we'll, we'll double-check our work.
Councilor Weaver.
Thank you. I, I'm for this. I think, though, that rather than benefiting the two-year, I think we should penalize the one-year and make it 25 and 40, and then you have a little bit of extra money. And, and I understand it's a hassle to renew every year or every two years, but, you know, I, I hear all of the things. I think the thing that I'm concerned about, and, and this is an ongoing thing with me because we have a couple of businesses that are working out of their residences in District 3 that, that I cannot get people to respond to because there isn't, hasn't been time and things like that. But but I need these licenses to be revocable if they're, if they're breaking the law. Because like, we've got a, we've got a, a business who, who just flagrantly parks on the street every time I go check the goats. And, and it's the same business that I've complained about that is operating out of their house, and they're not supposed to be, and
Is that, is that a recent? Because I haven't heard anything about this in months.
It's the same, it's the same.
Recent, though?
Yeah, the neighbors just stopped calling, and I've stopped bugging anybody because it's just, it's, it's every day because I drive by there and it's on the street. And, and so I think there's some, some, I'd like to know that in this, if we're going to go to every two years, I'd like to know that there's a process if there is a business who, because, and while I agree that most people, I, I think are doing their best and trying to play fair, I think we have some businesses that are flagrantly breaking rules. And, and I, and I'd like people to know, especially our constituents, our residential constituents to know that we do actually follow up on some of the egregious stuff that, that some of the businesses are doing.
Well, and, and we do, and, and our code-
And I know you do.
And our code does allow for us to, to pull a license.
Okay.
But there's a process, and it requires, it requires evidence and a process.
Okay.
So our code does allow it.
Okay, I, I guess what I'm communicating is I've communicated with code enforcement. Code enforcement has to go out and take those pictures. They don't have time to go out and take those pictures.
Well, no, we, we've, we've gone out and taken pictures, and, and we find the business, and, and the last I heard, they were gone. I have not heard that they're, but I, if nobody calls us, I can't, I can't investigate.
All right, I, I, I just want to make sure that we have teeth in revoking these licenses, especially if we're going to go till longer.
Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you. I, I, I kind of agree with the 25, 25 for the one year and 40 for the two. I think that is a, a good plan to try to motivate people to move into your new process.
Again, the goal here is to go to one eventually. I think we were just hoping to offer one year for 2026, for 2025 to try and get people split.
Okay.
But, you know, that's, the, the goal is not, again, our, our vendors actually let us know we can't really offer that option, and again, we need to write it in a code the certain way. So, again, our, our hope would be for the first year, half the businesses go into a one-year renewal. Half the businesses go into a two-year renewal. What we're, what I'm hearing is it would be sure nice to offer an option if it's possible.
For longer.
For longer.
Okay, so then I'm going to ask for consensus to-
Can you wait a minute?
Yes.
Because I'd like to ask a question. On the GOV OS, is that a platform that a business is going to log on to and be able to negotiate a payment at that time?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Renew, renew license, apply for license, renew license, pay sales tax.
Okay.
And other things.
And so what, and then you will have another way to to sort of reach out to all of the potential entrepreneurs that are in our city and alert them that they need a business license? And that they need to sort of, you sort of register with this OS system?
Yeah, there'll be good communication that goes out ahead of this launch. It's due to launch in time for the 2025 renewal calendar year. So there'll be lots of education that is going out to existing businesses. And then we have, I think, good information available for, for new businesses to make sure that they, they know. So there'll be a lot of communication going out to existing businesses about the new platform.
So we'll be able to sign up before January 1 because it's due on January 1.
That's right, yeah. I think the goal is at this point, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're still aiming for a launch in November.
Correct.
Okay, sorry. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask for consensus to implement two-year renewals for remote seller information forms and business licenses, changing the business license fees to $40 for the two-year renewal and amend sections 11-24, 11-27, 11-29 of municipal court code to support these changes and ask staff to look into the possibility for a potential longer renewal.
Okay, we have consensus there. Continue.
All right, thank you, council. Next, we're going to be talking about the possibility of increasing late fees, and Mr. Colvin is going to start us off.
Thank you, Cole. I, I think this is a good time to talk about late fees because we've just heard a lively discussion about putting more teeth into what we do. And you heard me say earlier that over 50% of our business license renew late every year. So it, it's a very inefficient use of my staff's time. And I, I think it's time that we sharpen those teeth.
Thank you, Mr. Colvin. So as Mr. Colvin alluded to, we're looking at a solution where we increase our late fees in an effort to incentivize a more timely renewal of those business licenses. On this next slide here, you will see a table that includes our current schedule of late fees. So $10 if it's, you know, zero to 30 days late, $30 if it's 30 to 60 days late, and $100 if it's later than 60 days. We're recommending doubling those fees and going to a scheme where if it's zero to 30 days late, it's $20. If it's 30 to 60 days late, it's $60. And if it's more than 60 days late, it would be $200. And I think it's important to note here that the goal of this proposal isn't to increase our revenues. Our goal here is to try and get business compliance, because what we really want is them to submit a license online. That way, it's easier for our staff to handle those licenses. We don't have to keep up on them and send them additional renewal notices, et cetera. So the goal would be that by increasing these late fees, we actually occur, accrue far fewer late submissions. And in addition, with that new GOV OS platform with the enhanced renewal notifications, we have, again, less late submissions with those two improvements and ultimately collecting less late fee renew, revenue is the goal. So the options that we prepared for council is to increase those late fees as recommended by staff and amend the municipal code to support those changes, or to take no action.
Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you guys know by the time you get to April, if someone hasn't renewed yet, how many times has staff touched it to get them to renew, to ask them to renew?
That's an excellent question. Mr. Colvin, might you be able to answer that?
I'll speculate. I don't have the facts, but it has been touched quite a few times, at least three, because it would, it's already three months late. In, in some way or another, we've sent out a reminder. We've, we've, we will send out a notice to say you're a month late, you owe us, you know, this amount, you're two months late, you owe us this amount. It's, it's a, it's a huge burden.
Okay, and then, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do support increasing the fees. I just have one suggestion is that the, the deadline to file your first quarter, your Q1 federal, state, unemployment, FMLA+ is April 30. And so I would wonder if we would consider starting the, the $200 at April 30 or later? Because that might be a point where a business owner is in their mind like, oh, got to get my 940 in, got to get my FMLA+ in, got to get my unemployment rate, like, so I, so, and business license can be on that list, that mental list. So I wonder if we start the $200 at April or later, April 30 or later.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but I, it is, it's far easier to program this into the GOV OS system to, to send out email reminders and mail reminders on a more frequent basis. And this, this has been our practice for quite a long time, the, the sequence of, you know, one month, two months, three months. I, 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 I think we can look into it, but I, I, I don't have a strong opinion against that, but I think it would be easier to keep doing what we've done. We've already talked with our software service provider about how to code in the, the late fees. So it would, there would be some changes there that we, that we'd need to make.
I guess my reason for that is because there are so many different forms and files that we have, that we have to file and all different deadlines that the more conformity we could get to some of it, the, the easier for business owners can, can deal with it. And so I guess it, you know, it would be a, you would be at a, a 30, a 60, a 90, and a, a 120 would be your last reminder, right? It would go out April 30, and it would say, sorry, now you're too late, now you owe us $200. So, I mean, if, if we could make that work, I, I think it would be, be more business-friendly forward. Thank you, Councilor Hoppe.
So are you just more discussion on this item? So we have a, a request for staff to increase the late fees as recommended by staff and amend the municipal code to support these changes. as recommended by staff and amend the municipal code to support these changes. Do we have consensus on that? We do, thank you. Moving right along.
All right, next, we want to talk about inspection fees. So as was previously mentioned, physical nexus businesses, and those are those businesses that have a physical location, a brick and mortar, for example, in the city of Wheat Ridge. When they apply for their first business license, they have to undergo a business license inspection. The inspection is designed to ensure that the business meets appropriate regulatory and building code standards. And it focuses primarily on life, safety, and health issues like blocked exits or unsafe electrical wiring is a couple of examples of things that they frequently look for and often find. These business license inspections are currently conducted for the city by Charles Abbott Associates, which is the firm that provides our overall inspection services and community development. And they charge the city $95 for each of the inspections that they conduct. Currently, the city is not passing any of this cost on to the businesses. And that is what we are proposing. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Miller to continue speaking on this issue.
All right, thanks, Cole. Just a reminder that the benefits of the inspection program are to reduce the risk and volatility of fines, increase safety. As Cole mentioned, there's lots of issues that are sometimes identified when looking at these facilities and the inspection identifies and make sure they have a safe environment for both the business owners and the public in general. We're looking to reduce liability issues and enhance the reputation of the business amongst the community. Overall, we're asking for you to approve establishment of inspection fee for time applicants, which will pay the full cost of the inspection, which is $95. Overall, we're just asking to pass on the cost of that that Charles Abbott charges the city. If you look at alignment with other cities that do this, both Fountain and Erie charge a similar fee. So we're just looking to align with them. Charging a business license inspection aligns with the city standard practice of charging for inspections and other cost recovery for licensing for other type of licenses. So we do this for other licenses. We want to kind of align with that on the business license side as well. And of course, the business inspection supports the integrity and builds public trust. So, next slide is that we have your options. First and foremost, we're looking for consensus. All right, consensus to amend the municipal code to direct the city manager to establish an annual review and inspection fee set at the cost to provide a business license inspection. Or your other option is to take no action and implement an inspection fee for applicable businesses, so do nothing.
Counselor Hoppe.
Can you clarify, is this a one-time inspection that has to happen when they first open the business? So it's not something that's ongoing?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, great, I support it.
Counselor Ohm. I had a question. Can you tell me how you inspect and license food trucks in the city of Wheat Ridge?
I don't believe they get, Lauren's here. I don't believe they get a business license inspection for those. I think it's more of a health.
They have to have a health inspection.
It's really home occupation and food trucks that we don't do this.
That's correct. So we inspect the permanent locations or if they have a commissary kitchen. But the mobile food truck has a different type of license often and is inspected by the county.
So the county, the county does an inspection on that? And do you know what the terms of their inspections are?
I don't.
An annual?
For restaurants, it's annual.
And then what do we do for business licenses for those individuals, those businesses?
They have to be licensed in the city. They have to have a business license. Anyone selling anything in the city, if they're brick and mortar. Mark, does a food truck outside of Wheat Ridge, if they're like, are they considered economic nexus? Mark, you there? You might be on mute. I'm not sure, Mayor. I mean, if someone's paying sales tax in the city, they're either, they either have a business license, if their business address is in the city, or they have an economic, they have a remote, they fill out a remote seller form if their business is not located within the city.
Food trucks obviously have a nexus in the city.
Yeah.
So are they, do they get a business license in the city?
They'd either have a business license or they would have that remote seller.
Okay, but if they were a remote seller, they couldn't come into the city and sell their product?
That's what I need clarification from. They're one or the other.
Okay. Well, I wouldn't, I mean, otherwise, they'd be hiring a delivery service to deliver the
That's true, yeah.
The product into the city.
I would think they're, they need a business license.
Okay. And do we go after them? Proactively?
I can't think of an example of outside of festivals where we have chased down a truck and asked to see their business license.
Okay.
I'm not saying we haven't done it.
Okay.
And we could do it.
Okay. Because there's a lot of businesses in the city that have a business license and a nexus in the city and have a license and pay those taxes.
It's a big focus of our compliance officer.
We'll look into it and come back to you with a report on what we're doing and not doing, see if we need to strengthen our code.
Perfect. Additional discussion? Counselor Snell.
Just speaking as a mobile food vendor.
That's right.
However, I don't have a truck. But I, I think the way that I remember starting, the county, basically, the city kind of like concedes to the county when the county does an inspection. And usually, that food vendor signs an agreement with a commissary kitchen. And that commissary kitchen then signs their permit, their annual permit that they get. So that's how I operate. I operate through a commissary kitchen. That commissary kitchen goes through each, each point of, are you doing all these things safely? And then you pay them a lot of money and then they sign your permit for the year. However, with, for me personally, living in Wheat Ridge and operating, but not having a physical location, I still do have the physical nexus, which is kind of, it's kind of a gray area. But I'm just, I just wanted to provide a little clarity there.
Thank you for knowing that.
So do we have consensus to amend the municipal code to direct the city manager to establish an annual review and inspection fee and set the cost to provide a business license inspection?
And to chase down food trucks.
And to chase, I've got that down.
You know, we already have a consensus on that. Use the police.
And food bicycles, too.
Look at that Leo on it. We can't catch her. Oh, my gosh, we're almost there.
Okay.
Next, please.
Cole.
Yes, so the next thing and the final item that we would like to discuss with you tonight as a way to improve our business licensing process is the idea of consolidating special licenses. So we have many businesses in the city of Wheat Ridge that like to engage in certain activities that are special. And by engaging in these activities, they are required to have a special license, like a tobacco or a hotel license, for example. We categorize these special licenses into two groups. So we consider them to be either essential or supplemental special licenses. Those essential special licenses are exactly what they sound like. They permit a business's core activity. And it's likely that the business would close that if they, if they didn't have that essential license. So an example would be a hotel. They are highly dependent on their hotel license. If they lose their hotel license, they're likely to close their doors. On the other side, we have our supplemental licenses, many of which permit complementary activities. So it's likely that a business with a special license, if they lost that special license, they may continue to operate in perpetuity. And an example would be a gas station with a tobacco license. If they were to lose their tobacco license, they would still be able to sell gasoline and they would likely still be able to maintain a majority of their operations. We've split them into these two different categories on the screen for you. So on the left, we have all our essential licenses. On the right, we have all of our supplemental licenses. And what we're proposing doing is for those hotel, massage, pawnbroker's licenses, we want to consolidate their special license with their business license. So right now, they have to have the business license and their special license. We're proposing that they only get one license. It's their special license, and it works the same as their business license. So the idea would be that it makes it easier for us on the staff side. It makes it easier for the business because there's only one license. There's only one renewal date to keep track of. There's only one fee that they have to pay, et cetera. In addition to consolidating these essential licenses for the hotel, massage, and pawnbrokers, we're proposing increasing each of those special license fees by $20 to make up for the fact that they don't have to renew their business license and pay that separate $20 fee. We're not proposing to do that with short-term rental licenses because they already act precisely the way I've explained our proposal. So if you have a short-term rental license, you don't have to have a business license. You don't have to pay a separate fee. So in a way, we just want these other essential licenses to act the same way our short-term rental license acts right now. That's our proposal. And our counsel options are consensus to amend the municipal code to consolidate those essential licenses and increase fees by $20 as recommended by staff or to take no action.
Do we have consensus to do that? Okay, we do. What else do you have tonight?
Yeah, that's everything. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We're going to take a recess until nine o'clock. Let's reconvene our meeting. Thank you all. We are now on agenda item number three. This is our Sustainability Action Plan Project Update and Draft New Plan. So Mr. Goff.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll turn it over to Mary Ann Schelling, our Assistant City Manager. I'll introduce the item.
Great, yes, we are here tonight to talk about our Sustainability Action Plan update. With us here tonight, we have Mary Hester, our Sustainability Coordinator, and Grace Sullivan, our consultant who's here with Lotus Engineering and Sustainability. So I'll pass it on to Mary to get us started.
Awesome. Thanks, Mary Ann, and good night, everyone. Thanks for hanging in there with us. Like Mary Ann said, I'm joined tonight with Grace Sullivan from Lotus Engineering and Sustainability. We're really excited to be here presenting our draft action plan update to you all. This is a project that we kicked off at the end of January this year. And as you heard earlier tonight from many of our Sustainable Wheat Ridge members over the past several years, Wheat Ridge as a city and a community has been able to make major steps forward in our sustainability efforts. And that was really all started with the community. That committee spent over 500 hours putting together the first action plan back in 2018. And to date, we have 64% of that either completed or in progress, which is a great amount of progress to make. And so we felt that it was a really opportune time for us to update that plan in which we're looking ahead to the next five years. And we saw this as an opportunity to work more closely with staff and city leadership to form our updated plan that continues to be actionable and get everyone's buy-in so that we can really continue to integrate sustainability in, not only in the community, but also throughout the city and its operations as well. And so that's led us to this point. We've done a lot of engagement. We've formed this draft plan, and we're really excited to present it to you tonight. And so with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Grace.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, everyone, for your time this evening. I'm really appreciative for staying late. Again, my name is Grace Sullivan. I'm a Senior Associate at Lotus Engineering and Sustainability on the Communications and Engagement Team. And I've had the absolute pleasure of partnering with city staff and leadership in Sustainable Wheat Ridge and creating this plan. So I'm really pleased to present this to you tonight. So with that, I'll go through the agenda. I want to be mindful of time, so please let me know if I'm going too quickly or if we need to take questions. But this is what we will go over today. I will quickly introduce the plan and the new goals. Then I'll provide an overview of the Sustainability Action Plan. We'll review plan goals, and then we'll review the strategies. And then finally, I'll talk about the implementation plan and next steps. All right, so we'll get into it. This is the plan process overview. This is how we created the plan. As Mary mentioned, in 2018, the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee created this plan. It had over, it had six focus areas, 20 goals, and 135 strategies. And at the time, it was accepted with gratitude. It was not, however, adopted. And so that being said, as Mary mentioned, there was a ton of momentum, and this plan was really pleased to build off of that momentum and great foundation. So these are the core planning process components. And I won't go into too much depth because each component has its own slide. But just for your situational awareness, we'll talk about the existing conditions analysis that we conducted. We did an engagement plan in which we engaged city staff, city leadership early and frequently. And then we also did a goal-setting and prioritization session with city staff to really promote strategies that could do more than one thing. And then finally, an implementation plan and tracker that has data and metrics that will help your city staff actualize the plan. So it's very incremental. You can see progress as you move through it, and you can generate buy-in internally and with the public. So this, the existing conditions analysis, we were cognizant that there were multiple plans being updated or created at this time. And so we were really intentional in doing our research and contextualizing the plan with all these other plans, not just locally, but also county and regionally. I'll give you a moment to read through those. On the next slide, this is our engagement plan. This shows the stakeholders that we engaged and the tactics we deployed to engage them. Again, you'll see that we really worked hard to generate buy-in and have all of our goals and strategies vetted by city staff. We also worked with water districts because we had heard loud and clear from the community that water was the top priority. We worked with Sustainable Wheat Ridge, small businesses. I understand that there's a business prosperity plan being created at the moment, and so we were really intentional of not overextending the business community and partnering with them closely to understand what their findings were. And then we also reached out to community members through in-person events and a survey. So this is the prioritization methodology. We came up with a suite of options, a suite of strategies, and we really wanted to give you a five-year roadmap that packed a punch, right? So these are the prioritization methodologies that we co-created with city staff. So every viable strategy was ranked on this prioritization methodology. So obviously, in a sustainability action plan, environmental impact and resilience was important. It ranks 40%. So strategies had to show a positive impact on the environment or on resources. Then we ranked them against feasibility. This was taking into strategic considerations that are specific to Wheat Ridge to make sure that the plan could be actionable within Wheat Ridge. We also wanted to take into account community appetite and support for different strategies. And then this final bucket is co-benefits, which is kind of the tiebreaker. But the point of the co-benefits is to deliver strategies that can do more than one thing, that can address more than one challenge or provide more than one opportunity. And so we added that at 10%. So we'll dive right in. So on this screen, you'll see the focus areas for this plan. You'll also see the sum of the goals and the strategies is just kind of to lay the foundation, the groundwork. You'll see we have six original focus areas that were in the Sustainability Action Plan, but then we added two more to make sure that Wheat Ridge was on par with some of your peer communities and trends that we see nationally. So we added businesses and jobs and arts and culture. You'll notice that a focus area is missing, that equity focus area. And that's because we heard loud and clear from the community and city leadership and staff that equity needed to be baked within each individual focus area. It should not be separated out. So we won't cover that today, but it is in your packets. You'll see in each section, there is equity considerations of the programs and strategies and policies that could be implemented through this plan. So those are the summary of goals. And then further to the right, you'll see the number of strategies that accompany each goal. Strategies ladder up very neatly into the goals to show you how we'll reach them. I won't cover all the strategies because I recognize what time of night it is, but I will go over the top priority strategies. Before I do that, I will go into the goals first. So again, this is just the umbrella, but everything's within your packet. All right, so the very first focus area is water. We heard this across the board. This was a top priority. The goals here are to improve stormwater management systems, increase water quality, incorporate water efficiency and conservation measures to reduce municipal water usage. I think it's really important to pause here that your city staff wanted to lead by example and walk the walk. And so a lot of these strategies start within the municipal usage of energy or water or other resources. And then increase the adoption of water efficiency and conservation measures within the community. Transportation, increase traveler safety and environmental quality. Maximum development that substantially incorporates mixed-use considerations. And increase access to multimodal transportation options. For solid waste and recycling, we wanted to reduce negative impacts of waste management on city infrastructure and improve waste management behavior by residents, businesses, and institutions. In the sector of renewable energy, we wanted to promote renewable energy projects and policies within the city and also regionally, and then implement renewable energy projects. Again, you see here reduced municipal energy use. That is leading by example. But we also put in here a baseline strategy or a baseline goal, which is to understand and track commercial and industrial use so that we can create more impactful goals by understanding the data and make defensible decisions in that regard. The other goal is to encourage sustainable design infrastructure elements and to promote energy efficiency programs for residents. In businesses and jobs, we wanted to support sustainability workforce development, expand participation in the Colorado Green Business Network, engage Wheat Ridge businesses and organizations to encourage sustainable practices, and encourage Wheat Ridge residents to buy All right, communications and engagement. This is cross-cutting. This is so important. The first thing we wanted to do with communications and engagement is celebrate the incredible success that Wheat Ridge has already experienced in the work of your city staff. Encourage the community through a behavior change campaign to grow participation in sustainability activities. We want to engage city staff and institutional partners to promote awareness of and support of the plan, and then also create opportunities for a healthy feedback and input loop. And finally, arts and culture is to collaborate with arts and cultures institutions to advance So with that, we'll dive right into the strategies. And again, this is not all-encompassing of the strategies. These are just the top strategies that bubbled up through that prioritization methodology that we discussed. So the first one here is water. And what I would specifically like to draw your attention to, again, is the baselining strategy so that you can make bold goals. We heard that from your leadership, city staff. We heard that from the community. And in order to do that, we need to understand where we're at. The principle here really is that you cannot manage what you're not tracking. So there's a lot of, and again, I'll highlight these for you as we go through, but you'll find a lot of strategies that really empower that data collection and analyzation peppered throughout the whole, the whole plan. All right, for transportation, I wanted to highlight how this plan really works to bolster other plans that also touch transportation. And then it also positions Wheat Ridge to partner more regionally to maximize efforts along I-70 to improve air quality and quality of life. In solid waste and recycling, again, you see a baselining strategy here that you can, so that you can track your progress and take credit for it, and then also a lead-by-example strategy by focusing on what we can control municipally. In renewable energy, what I really want to talk about here is the language that empowers and positions Wheat Ridge to maximize the funding that's available at the state and federal level. This is an unprecedented year of funding, and so we wanted to make sure this plan allowed Wheat Ridge to force multiply in that regard. For energy efficiency and green building, these strategies are a mix of all of the above. Again, you have baselining, you have leading by example, and you also have language that positions you in a good place to get funding and then also work at a regional level. For communications and engagement, again, this plan is really pleased to build off the incredible support from the Wheat Ridge community. And so that, the strategies we have here are designed to keep that momentum going and also empower your residents to take advantage of the incredible amounts of funding available at this time. For businesses and jobs, this focus area is really characterized by bolstering existing Wheat Ridge momentum, like I mentioned, but it's also in line with broader regional goals to really improve the, sorry, to improve the access of workforce and to usher in that green transition. And so that puts you right in line with organizations like Denver Regional Council of Government or Dr. Koch. All right, and then arts and culture. This focus area is really about behavior change. We find that arts and culture is a powerful tool in catalyzing behavior change with your residents and your communities. It's also really effective at engaging different segmented audiences like your youth. And then finally, the implementation tracker. Right now, this is an internal document, and you can see all the different metrics that, metrics and data points that this tracker is keeping, keeping track of, for lack of a better word. So responsible parties, but also supporting parties, so you can look at workload internally. It also tracks the action level of effort, so you can understand what your high-impact strategies will be versus your quick wins. It prioritizes actions by deadlines. It provides a status overview. And above all, it creates a really lovely visual for city staff, and I understand it'll be made public in the future so that it's also an accountability tool for the plan and your public can see where you are and see the data behind the decisions that were So I'll quickly cover the next steps. Next steps are to incorporate your feedback, add the graph, the plan to, into graphic design, and then return to a meeting to pursue adoption of the plan. And I kept that as quick and easy as I could for the time of, time of night. Thank you.
That was great. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, we'll start with Counselor Hoppe and then Counselor Hulte.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for your presentation. I just wonder, can you, can you send that slideshow to staff so they can email that out to us, please?
Absolutely.
So that we can just kind of dig into some of it a little bit more. And I appreciate that, and I look forward to your, your designed and final presentation.
Counselor Hulte.
Thank you. So I want to just start with a huge thank you to Mary Hester and all of the amazing people who give their time to Sustainable Wheat Ridge. It is like an extraordinary brain trust and passion trust in our committee, in our community, and we have had some turnover, you know, since I joined the committee a couple of years ago. But every time I'm in that room, I mean, it is people bringing their best to really solve some of our most pressing problems. And I just also want to acknowledge Grace and her team for having done such an amazing job, taking this abundance of information and really like filtering it down to something that to me very much aligns with who Wheat Ridge feels like it is. And one of the things that's so important to me is that we need to find that balance point between being extraordinarily ambitious, given the pressing urgency of a lot of our climate issues, but also recognizing, you know, we are a city and there is only so much that we can do. And what really makes me excited about what's coming forward from this time is that the scrappy first version, and scrappy is the only word I can come up with, really, you know, came forward to council that, that was happy to see it there, and I'm happy we were able to staff some of its implementation, did an amazing job of advancing, you know, really through program. How are we, you know, establishing a culture in our city where sustainability is important enough that we are programming, engaging our community, staff is starting to integrate it, but without it being an adopted plan? I mean, it had its limitations despite being not adopted, I think. The city did a great job of, of still working with it. What we are seeing here is a plan that shows the city is serious about sustainability and that it wants to ensure that staff across the departments from the top to the bottom really understand the actions that can be taken. What I see as an elected official and policymaker is that what's coming forward helps me understand what to prioritize and what actions that we can take at the policy level because ultimately with climate action, sustainability, we have to, we really with climate action, sustainability, we have to, we really have to get it in policy. So I'm just excited and I'm grateful that this is where we are, and I'm, of course, enthusiastically supporting it with a lot of gratitude and acknowledgement for the work. And at the end of the day, what we're seeing is measurable, accountable metrics, and I just want to say, like, if everything came with that level of, like, fine detail on the accountability and being able to dashboard, not just the efforts that we're doing, but how that translates directly into benefits for a community, it's, to me, a leading example of what we can be doing. So can't wait to see the prettier version of it, but just want to acknowledge, I appreciate that staff actually went through the exercise of ensuring that what comes forward is something that we're going to know what to do with the day after, to ensure that we get past that 65%. And I'm already looking forward to updating the next one because we got to 100%. So, and I loved how you said you cannot manage what you are not tracking, and there's a lot to track here, and I think this is a really great plan, so just thank you, everyone.
Additional discussion? Counselor Larson.
This is a tremendous work. It is obviously the result of many, many hours of, of effort and thought and it, in terms of, and I've read all 65 pages of the report, and I, again, impressed with the, the diligence and the effort that went into this. That being said, I do have so many concerns about some assumptions that, too many assumptions to count that I just, I'd marked as things that maybe stretched a little bit or assumed something that may not have been the case, but through it all, I, I kept coming back to this idea of producing a document that, that provides the city with a guidance document for, for going forward, but there were two glaring emissions that I kept looking, I kept looking to find, and I couldn't. And when it gets back to community impacts and vulnerable, vulnerable communities, I kept thinking about the power grid in Wheatbridge and how many, many neighbors, probably most neighborhoods in the city, still have above ground power wires that are vulnerable, and with all of our lives being so dependent on electricity and reliable supply of electricity, to have that last 50 feet from the top, the telephone pole to the home, vulnerable, as we saw in April when we had a windstorm came through, and many neighborhoods were affected by power utility poles that simply weren't up to it. And to have the city not even consider putting pressure, however it's applied, on the utility to provide better inspections and to repair poles that are, that are defective and to just basically strengthen the power grid that is outside of our homes, that when, whenever I've inquired about it, there doesn't seem to be anything that the city feels it can do. So I, I would think between that and then the other issue that, that bothered me in terms of a impact on, on vulnerable communities here, and that's, that's noise. Noise pollution is a very real impact on our communities. Noise pollution continues to degrade the quality of life, and it is something that I think the city can do something about. Noise pollution is something that can be measured, and policies can be put in place to, to ease or at least reduce the impact of noise pollution across the city.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Oh, Counselor Ong.
Yeah, I'll be quick. I can't say I'm surprised that the number one rank was, was water, which is really, really important, and it's something that I really think about kind of daily basis in the water conservation and, and there is a lot of, there's a lot of really good information, a lot of work that you did. I really appreciate staff, Mary and Grace working on this project. This is, this is a really special project for Wheatbridge because I feel like looking at sustainability really aligns with the, with the city's goals and the community's goals, and really just, once we get it on, on paper and we have that document, I think that sends a message to the community that we're, we are serious about sustainability. And not surprising, a lot of people are serious about it, too, so thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Counselor Weber.
Thank you for the report. Just a couple of things that, that I, I thought it was very comprehensive in so many ways. I would like us to really consider, I, I thought the, the green business section was good. I, I would, I would appreciate a little bit more effort towards what that really looks like in terms of, because I, I feel like it's, there's been a lot of focus on residential sustainability, but the, and, and I, and I think a lot of, as, as a business owner, a lot of the rules are just different as soon as you have a business license and with the state and all of those different things as far as a lot of the sustainability measures, and a lot of things that you think a business could do, even very simple things like recycling, are actually very difficult. And I think a lot, it's, it's, it's hard to tell someone, well, I'm trying to do this and this and this, but I'm not doing this because it's, it's so much of a cost to do. And, and so that, that was just something I thought about throughout this is, it would be really great to, to find ways and low hanging fruit that our business community could really feel involved with sustainability in Wheatbridge and feel part of it. The second piece is that we have a lot of new housing coming into our community that's not necessarily ownership or land based, and, and I think we often think about sustainability as just land based, if that makes sense, in other words, ownership. And, and that is another aspect of, you know, if you rent in this city, it's very hard because you are dictated by the building that you live in and what it can do. And, and I would just really love to see this be a little bit more inclusive of, of all of our residents, business owners, but also renters of, of, of all income, and, and not just sort of focusing on the resident and the, and the spatial aspect, but how everyone can feel a part of it. So thank you very much, I, I think it's really comprehensive.
Thank you. Additional discussion? I was, I want, thank you very much, it's really a great plan. I was just sort of noodling in my brain about some of the, you know, a lot of the things that we've done over the last, well, seven years or so, and, you know, just really a lot of, you know, there's the, the things that we actually accomplished, the rain barrel work and, and, and other things, but really the, the ability to sort of bring this to the fore in our community. And I think we might, you know, sort of look at other, at how many opportunities would there be to, to make this plan and make more awareness throughout the community in general? You know, we talked about engaging the business community, you know, maybe the, we have the Wheatbridge Chamber, we have the Wheatbridge Business Association, we have the, you know, as we, as we, you know, use our grant dollars, perhaps we could put a sustainability component in, in some of those as an idea to, to be able to incorporate that more widespread as we reach out and communicate with our schools, schools back in, in play this week, and how we can make those, foster those relationships and really make it sort of a core, sort of a subtext about everything we do is that we do it sustainably. Thank you. Counselor Hulte.
Sorry, I would be remiss, my last note here, which is not an apt thought by any means, is, I think one of the other just enormous differences is the equity throughout component of this. When I, I mean, I was fortunate enough being on the committee to have reviewed it a month ago with everybody, but I just really appreciate that we're thoughtfully contemplating that throughout, and it didn't come out in the slideshow here, but I am really proud of how our priorities are contemplating everybody, including a lot of people whose voices we weren't necessarily able to reach as strongly, so, and I know that that's one of the strengths that Lotus brings to this process, and I really appreciate that a lot of the goals and priorities here are going to be benefiting people who traditionally don't always get some of that immediate benefit in our community, so I'm, I'm very proud of that, and so just thank you for that. And then I just have a question, so Councilmember Larson raised the point about the utility poles, and I know that undergrounding utility poles is a priority for a lot of people who've sat on this dais and continues as we, we struggle with that. Is that something that's typically contemplated in a sustainability, like where, where would we see a, well, I guess answering that question, and the second one would be, of course, if not here, then where, but is that something that is contemplated in a sustainability plan or a climate action plan?
Sure, so I'll take first, and then I welcome you to add in. So typically for sustainability action plan, we focus on two primary goals, and the first one is climate, climate pollution. So you have your science-based targets, which, which say we must reduce a certain amount of emissions to prevent global warming from surpassing a certain point. So the first pillar is to reduce those emissions, and the second pillar is to conserve resources that are important to your way of life, like water and energy. However, to your point, there are many concentric circles of plans, and typically I would find, I believe, something like that, that's more grid resilience, more in hazard mitigation plan, or maybe a plan that focuses on resilience in general. That's not to say that there aren't strategies in here that do promote resilience as well as part of the co-benefits. The second part of your question was about noise pollution, and yes, that is a, a type of pollution, and I understand the concern. Typically, we don't see those in sustainability action plans because of the focus on, on resources, conservation, and climate pollution, but I do, I do hear the, the importance of place making and quality of life and how that can really lend itself to sustainability.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I do, yeah, I just because I know that the undergrounding of the utility poles is important, and it's helpful to know that you should be looking at that in hazard mitigation, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, for the discussion on this, this is great, and we're going to be looking for a, for a final report to come back sometime this fall?
Yes, that'd be the plan.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much, great, great presentation, we appreciate your work on this. That finishes our study items, we'll next go to staff reports, Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor, I know it's late, but just one real quick update, I know you'd be interested in, I want to provide an update on the Lutheran Legacy Campus. CBRE has been marketing the site for Intermountain Health, and they received, I think, about nine submissions from developers, potential new owners, they've narrowed that down to three, and city staff's going to be interviewing those three this week, and will provide feedback to Intermountain Health. Intermountain hopes to select a final candidate by the end of August, so very soon. A new owner will not likely close on the property, though, probably until sometime next year, once the rezoning is done and the, the ballot question, of course, is decided in November, so we'll keep you updated, but the three that we will be interviewing are really good and have the capacity, so we're excited that they narrowed it down to three good ones. We'll give you an update once we can release the names.
Progress there.
Yes.
It's great. Elected officials reports. Okay, everybody's got their hand up, Counselor Hulte.
Thank you, I just want to thank everybody who came earlier to speak tonight, it's really always helpful when we hear from our community. I just wanted to share, on Saturday night, I was walking the dog at, I don't know, about nine, and just happened to hear some music and walked over to Ritual Craft, where they were holding their annual fundraiser that they do, and it was just wild, they had these like techno guys with like techno sombreros going, and people were dancing, and, and I ran into two of my neighbors who also sort of happened to hear it, and it was just kind of a fun, unexpected activation on 44th that we don't really see very often, and Ritual Craft actually does a lot of great community stuff there, and that night through, through that particular event, they raised $45,000 for Urban Peak, which benefits kids in, throughout the Denver metro area that are grappling with homelessness. So good things happening in District Two, sometimes you don't know about them unless you're out in, in your grubbies, walking your dog at night, but it was just really a lot of fun. I just want to acknowledge Ritual Craft for making it kind of rowdy on 44th on Saturday night, but also for doing a lot of good in our community through fundraising for youth. That's all I got.
Okay, did I see Counselor Ong stand up? Great.
Thank you, Mayor, and I was curious about why there was a boxing ring, I did not see anybody participating.
They, they had a variety of programming, and yeah, I, I will leave it to your imagination, but it was not boring, I'll tell you that much.
So last week, I had the, last Thursday, had the honor of joining the mayor staff, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Stites was there at the foothills Housing Authority, where Congresswoman Patterson was there presenting a $2 million check for no unnaturally occurring affordable housing, and it was really great, you know, we have that, a really good relationship of, with Congresswoman Patterson, and I think that, you know, of supporting our community, supporting our affordable housing, and it was just, it was a really nice event, I know that she's, she's really busy, but just, you know, everything we can do and, and to help support affordable housing in our community is great. And then on Saturday, I had the, the pleasure of, of seeing the exciting green with Councilmember Hoppe, Mayor Pro Tem Stites, I know I'm going to miss some people, the mayor was there, a lot of staff, and really excited about that kickoff for the green. And, and then I was also really excited to see that Director O'Donnell was doing a land acknowledgement, and so she did that, which is really special, and, and yes, I made a poor decision, I'm wearing a sports coat when it was 93 degree, but, and I, and I learned a little lesson as nobody else was, but, but yeah, I, I got through that, lesson learned. Today, this morning, one thing that is really good for mind, body, soul is I go on my bike rides on the Kitter Creek Trail, and this morning I was, I was really grateful to get, just to, just to do, just to get that hour in, but I was, as I went through the Kipling Tunnel, which we all know goes underneath Kipling there, I was really disappointed and upset that there is a lot of derogatory, inflammatory graffiti sprayed all over the walls, and I really want our community to take note when we see that, we really got to get on it, and this was not just, you know, just the typical graffiti, this was very inflammatory, what they had put on those walls, and so, you know, I got up on the, you know, jumped off and, and texted Patrick and Director O'Donnell right away, it's like, we got to do something ASAP, and Director O'Donnell got back pretty quick, and she said, we got staff on it. It was, there was a lot of graffiti, and my takeaway on that is this, this is the first time I've ever seen that amount of the derogatory and hateful graffiti, but there's always some graffiti down there, and, and I kind of understand the reason, the lighting's poor, it's a blank canvas, and it's below grade, so nobody sees anybody, there's not a lot of public that really goes through there. And so I really, I really, you know, and I, and I emailed Patrick and, and carbon copied Councilmember Hulte and Director O'Donnell that, you know, maybe, maybe what we need to do to get ahead of this is maybe we need to involve, you know, like the high school and get some graphic artists and paint the walls, you know, would be an idea, and also we got to get some increased lighting, and so that's, you know, talking to C-DOT, which might be, we, we need to do that and, and really turn that around and tell the community that this is, you know, this is our community, and we're, we're taking control of this tunnel and beautifying. And for those, coincidentally, that have not seen the CBS News Morning this morning, there was a teen graphic artist that got in trouble in South Dakota for doing some graffiti, and his graffiti was, was totally different than what I saw this morning, it was very interesting, and he got, he got a little bit of trouble, but he worked it out with the mayor, and I think that kid's got a future. And so that, that's what I want to, that's what I want to bring forth is, you know, we just, we, we always have to be watchful for our community, and, you know, do, do things better for our community, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and since I saw a lot of you last week, I won't reiterate everything that Counselor Ong just said, but a big thank you to Congresswoman Patterson and all of her support for everything that we're doing, but the $2 million for affordable housing is going to be huge. Counselor Hoppe and, and the mayor and, and everybody who spoke on Saturday at the Counselor Hoppy and the mayor and everybody who spoke on Saturday at the kickoff ceremony, I guess, did a phenomenal job. The Green is going to be hopefully a catalyst for 38th Avenue and for the businesses and even for the school there. Really excited about that. After that, I, I really thank Local Works for their big dumpster days. I'm getting rid of all of this stuff in my house, and I had a really ugly purple chair that I had been driving around with. Got rid of that on Saturday, so thank you to Local Works for that. And the other thing I, on Saturday, is I, as I was walking in and out of the grocery store, the Wheat Ridge High School football players were out there selling their farmer cards. $30 donation, you get a bunch of discounts on stuff. So if you see those football players out there, you know, as a former farmer might, well, no, you're never a former farmer, once a farmer, always a farmer. But as a former football player myself, please donate to those guys. Those, we heard about last year, the band getting their uniforms for the first time in decades, right? It's, these things take a lot of money, and it's really important to see that those kids have something to do after school and, and that we, sports aren't for everybody, but it is one of the ways that, you know, Wheat Ridge has been known over the years, and it's something that is a big legacy for our community. So give to those kids and then help them out. And if you can find and buy in Wheat Ridge, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was very happy to attend the first day of school with you, Mr. Mayor, at Stevens Elementary. I think I'm a lot more excited about first day of school as an adult than as, when I was going to school. I was not happy. But that was, it was a great time. I was so grateful to the staff there for the time that they spent on a probably very busy morning. And the last thing that you want to do is think about, you know, what you're going to say, but they took the time, they took us on a tour, got to give some high fives. It was really, it was really fun, and I was grateful to be there and got to see the new driveway in front of Stevens. It looks great. So far, things are working out well there for them, so good to hear that. Tomorrow morning at Prospect Park is a, at 9:00 AM is a partnership between Parks and Rec and Jefferson Center for Mental Health. There's a free meditation at Prospect Park, so I will be attending that and hope to see folks there for that. And then I just would like to, again, thank the folks who either called in, emailed, got in touch with us about items on the agenda tonight. This was a long meeting, we talked about a lot, but the folks that were here, the folks that called in, and then, of course, members of sustainability, too, just, all of these are great examples of people who truly care about our wonderful community and just that input and insight and taking your time to give feedback is so crucial, and I am very grateful and acknowledge everyone who did that. So, thank you.
Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I had the very distinct privilege of joining Mayor Pro Tem Stites at Prospect Valley Elementary's first day of school. That was fun. There were some folks from Jefferson County Schools, there were some other folks I hadn't seen in a while, and kind of came up and introduced themselves, but just watching these kids come in one by one and with their parents, without their parents, and just, some were determined, some were a little scared, but it was, it was a very interesting day. And then unfortunately, the next day, I found myself kind of scratching my head why traffic was so screwed up, and I found out later that the very tragic accident on I-70 at Ward Road and, and the follow-up with our police department, I have to give those guys all the credit in the world. What a difficult job that must have been. Such a tragic, tragic accident, and we still don't know the cause. We'll probably find out at some point. But I, my, my heart goes out to the family and, and the, the fact that we've got, in our community, we have a, one of the, you know, the busiest highways in the entire world that comes right through our community when there's construction going on and there is some distractions or whatever happened, to have this tragic accident take place in our community is just, it's heartbreaking. But again, my compliments to the Wheat Ridge City Police Department, they're professionals, they did their job.
Thank you. You know, one of the, one of the benefits of going last is that you, you don't have any thunder left, but even, even without it, I would like to, to say a thank you to Congresswoman Patterson and our, and the rest of our federal delegation for, for giving our naturally occurring affordable housing program a $2 million shot in the arm. Great, great work there with, with our federal delegation. I also want to recognize Front Range Regional Housing, who's Jefferson County Housing Authority, and we cooperate with them, and we were at the Ives, beautiful project, got a lot of things going on to help people in our community who are, who are less fortunate to be able to afford housing. Was great to be with Counselor Snell over at, over at Stevens Elementary School. The principal and her staff were just so gracious to us, they, they gave us a great introduction of their, their learning models and their, their crew, you know, opportunities that they have to develop, you know, cohesion and really esprit de corps amongst their students, and doing a great job there. Went back on Saturday to, to, you know, do a little groundbreaking for the Green at 38. You know, when I was sort of looking at my remarks, the thing that I, that stood out to me that, that I mentioned was that this was really our hometown downtown, you know, coming really into play. And we talked about what to do at 38th Avenue now, and I think we really got some excitement going on in our, in our community. And on I-70, Counselor Larson was right, the huge tragedy. I want to commend our, our city manager, Patrick Goff, for sending a, sending a note out Sunday morning to, to CDOT representative for, for this district to, to say, we're concerned about this, we're concerned about having our officers go out there, and we've had, we've had problems on that highway, you know, we've done some work on Highway 58 where it comes into, into I-70, and there's obviously some more that we need to do there, and we're going to, we're going to sort of keep working with CDOT and other, other partners to see if we can make more safety and for our whole community. And that, that sort of brings me to segue that we're ready to sort of close our meeting, but, but you, school is in session now, and we do have, we have young people walking and biking and riding and, and being out playing in our streets, and I hope everyone will, will stop, look and listen, drive slowly and carefully around our community so that everybody gets home at night in a safe condition. So we will be back here in council chambers for our next meeting next week, Monday night, 6:30. There's no more business to come before us, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all so much.